Called the June 4th City Council meeting to order. Need to read the decorum statement. And decorum state reads, "Welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones and set them to silent. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization, if any, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and city staff encourages constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warnings, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the council chambers." Thank you. Okay. Susan?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners, and everyone in a rightful place. Nikki McGuire, Naomi Kids. Naomi stands for never alone overcoming many issues, and that's what we've been doing going on 11 years now in the City of Apopka. This year is no different. Thank you to everyone who has helped with our summer camp program that's ongoing right now. We also, this year, we're doing something a little different. A lot of people give back, give backpacks and back to school supplies each year. We are partnered again this year with Chase Bank for the backpacks, so we all set there. But in addition to that, we have partnered with Ross Department Stores. So we will be doing shopping with the kids. So each child will be going to Ross. On July 26th, we will be there, and each child will be allowed to pick back to school clothing up to $100 limit, and we will pay for it. So we are reaching out to the general public today to please, we asking, if you can avoid giving us cash for this event, do not give us cash, we would prefer gift cards. So anyone could give gift cards. We currently, we have 25 kids on list that's in need of clothing for back to school. So that's a lot of money we need to raise. So if you can give us gift card that we can allow each child to shop up to $100 so they can go back to school with their backpacks that we already have accounted for their school supplies counted, we just need the clothing. Thank you all, have a great day.
To confirm, you want gift cards, any gift cards or specific to Ross?
The gift card is specific to Ross because Ross has already donated, Ross has donated $500. So we already have five kids covered. So we will prefer gift cards to Ross. If you give cash, it's also appreciated if it's an inconvenience for you to get the gift card, but then we will go get the Ross gift card. We just prefer specific gift card because it's aligned for that specific event. So it's better for, for the record keeping.
Excellent, thank you for clarifying.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, y'all know it's summertime and the kids are my babies, I'm on my lunch break, so I gotta run back. Have a good one.
Good afternoon. I am here as supervisor of the Orange Soil and Water Conservation District, Seat 3. I have been in touch with the Orange County Department of Environmental Protection, and they offer opportunities for citizens to learn how to test water. And the majority of our lakes in Apopka have never been tested for nitrogen and phosphorus, which causes eutrophication or the death of the lake. And if you heard last week, someone nearly lost their leg because of the overgrowth in the lake and bacteria then growing and causing an injury on the leg to become infected. And then you see the overgrowth causes the death of the lake and the aquatic animals in the lakes to die and, and be unedible. And then you look at all the pesticides, chemicals, fertilizers, herbicides, et cetera, that wash down. So we have people out there that are, even though they're not supposed to, they don't know because they're not reading or listening to the news or reading articles. Even their weekly, their monthly water bill, they're not reading the inserts or they don't get on the list to get your newsletters and your blurbs that say, "Don't fertilize." All summer long and all winter long, they're putting fertilizer out there, paying a couple thousand dollars a year to have fertilizer and pesticide put down. So then when these one, two, and three times a day gully washers come down, all of that is flooding into the lakes. What we want to do is have little HOA meetings where I can come in and teach them about alternative methods of taking care of their lawns. And I can come in here and do a general meeting with the council and explain it. Also, plants that absorb water, oak trees, a live oak tree can absorb 100 gallons of water a day. And it's great until its roots get covered in water for a long period of time, and then it kills it. But there are pond cypress and red maples and plenty of other trees that sit in heavy water during a flood period and don't die, but they drink a lot of water. So I'm offered the opportunity for people to get trained in how to test our lakes so we can find out what's wrong with which lakes and an opportunity to come out and speak with people, provide education so that the council and all the citizens can learn about what to do in their yards to protect the lakes and how to take care of them.
Leroy B. Almardhella. I want to play a oldie but goodie. Few months back, a young man was tased down on 10th, on 9th Street. I came to the City Council. We asked to see the video cam of this incident. We couldn't see it because it was an ongoing investigation, but they allowed members of the diocese to see it. One of the members, in their professional opinion, the police officer did what he had to do to keep this man safe and his self-safe and get back home. It was just a routine thing. Another commissioner came the next meeting night and said, "Well, you know, I'm not gonna leave that commissioner hanging out there by herself." Herself. I concur with what she said. But this gentleman is just now getting out of jail from that incident. You wouldn't allow the chief of police for us to see this video cam and everybody doing everything to hide it. But what you can't hide is the intake records from Orange County Sheriff's Department. This man, the record has showed that this man was battered, bruised, shoulder separated, and urinating blood for where he were repeatedly kicked and punched in his kidneys and in his rib. In my professional opinion, that's police brutality. That's overkill. But yet still, that'll be handled, and I hope the new incumbent, incoming police chief, I hope that she don't get in the backlash behind this crap that happened that this man leaving behind. And for those that, in their professional opinion, and not letting this, her hang out there on the horn, what I'm hoping for, what I pray for, is in March on this election, that people will feel the same way in their professional opinion, the derelict of duty of taking care of citizens. And I would like to make one thing clear to the Apopka critic and everybody a part of it along with Christine Moore. No, I'm not a Mayor Nelson supporter, nor am I her supporter. What we need, we need leadership in Apopka. It's time for career politicians to go get a job.
Good afternoon, Mayor Nelson and Commissioners. I'm here as usual on behalf of the unhoused and the needy in Apopka. I continue to volunteer my time tirelessly to support the effort. May 25th, we had an event at the Just Like Mama's Restaurant where we allowed them to come into the restaurant and have a inside meal. It was a beautiful event. The rain started just as soon as everybody got in, and the rain stopped when it was time for them to leave. So it was as it was supposed to be. The next event that she will have will be in June 4th, Sunday in June. Would you please mark that on your calendars? We'd love to have some support from some of the leaders of the community. Sometimes they feel stepped aside. And it would be good to at least have one or two of you come in and just tell them that, you know, that you care about them. Is there anything you could do to help them? Sometimes it's something simple as a bus ticket so they can get downtown. It's not that hard. You know, the things that they ask for are things that we take for advantage. So if you could, mark your calendars for the 4th Sunday in June to be at Just Like Mama's so that we could continue to do what we're doing with them, with letting them come into the restaurant to eat. All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
What time is it on June?
It'll be at 5:30.
Sylvester Hall?
Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs Ridge. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Commissioners, good evening. I come to you today with a powerful message. It's really not for you to take it lightly. I ask that each and every one of you in this room that is present to really listen to what I'm saying and the ones who are viewing it. Because when you look up the minutes for public comments, those minutes are put into somebody else's words, not your own words. And that needs to change. There's no reason why the City of Apopka can't have a word for word what the citizen come up here and say during public comment. But as always, the City of Apopka, the State of Florida, and our country is in a national crisis because too many people, too many good people standing by watching bad things happen and not doing anything about it. It's time for us to stand up against hate, time for us to stand up against corruption, and it's time for us to stand up against racism. Now, this country DNA was built on racism. And if we don't stand against it right now, not tomorrow, racism will destroy this country, period. So I ask that you take that to heart because in my humble words, we're in a civil war right now. Those are my humble words, and I'm a 20-year veteran, and I speak that. When we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth to the point the truth doesn't matter. Look around you. Take a look at how we're normalizing abnormal behavior that we wouldn't accept for our kids, but we're, we're normalizing that, and that has to stop. Laws, when you, when you talk about racism, we try to forget a lot of things. Therefore, we don't remember, so we repeat it. But if you remember the hate and the evil, that's not replaced by laws. Laws only change your behavior. They don't change what's in your heart, they don't change what's in your spirit. So we still have a lot of people walking around in that evil spirit. We bless them, and that's between them and their God. But they should have no place in public, uh, leadership or public office, period. When we start realizing that when we elect candidates that understand that principles matter, integrity matters, honesty matters, accountability matters, responsibility matters, morals matter, ethics matter, character matters, procedures matter, leadership matters, laws matters, and all God's people matters. Thank you.
Upper Route 3603 Golden Gem Road. It's good to come here sometimes and be positive. A lot of the time, we come here and we present problems. But, you know, problems are really an opportunity to have eloquent solutions. We have a problem just now with the amount of development that's going on in the city. And I'm not here to say that we shouldn't have development. But what I'm here to say is we have the opportunity to control development, to stop the urban sprawl. If you go back to about 2005, this is when the Kelly Park Interchange first began. Unfortunately, we didn't take the opportunity to put the infrastructure in over the last 20 years. Not this current administration's problem because there was administrations before them that had the opportunity to do that. However, how can we proceed with development without urban sprawl? Well, the KPI, the boundary of that isn't actually a hard line. And in order to let you understand, Golden Gem Road, Parkview Preserve, and my property were outside the KPI, but they were annexed into it. There's multiple reasons how you can annex into it. But the net result was, at that particular point, they increased the boundary size of the KPI by about 880 yards, half a mile. It takes you one minute to drive that, it would take you five minutes to walk that. So we're not speaking about a large increase in the boundary of the KPI. But you realize that if you increase the boundary of the KPI by just 800 yards, you increase the overall volume within that area by 225%. That means you've got more than two and a half, two and a quarter times the amount of houses that you can then put into there. Why is that important? Because a lot of the infrastructure for that new development would already be within the KPI. You would have new roads, you'd have new drainage, you'd have the schools that are going to be built. And the thing is, it doesn't require any change in legislation because your planning department already can allow people to become part of the KPI. So we're not creating precedence. And if we were to do that, we do have more control because the planners would go through a process of allowing people into the KPI. We can control that development. To me, it makes sense, we want to stop the urban sprawl, and we want to try and continue the development, but in a sensible way. So how I would do that is I would increase the boundaries of the KPI by 800 yards. Five-minute walk, one-minute drive, and all the infrastructure is already there. And it does allow us to take more control of the planning with that, in that area, and leave places like the Springs well alone.
All right, thank you. And with that, we'll have Commissioner Smith give us a prayer pledge and fact of the day, please, sir.
Our fathers, once again, that we come for your presence, thankful for the many blessings that have been stored upon us for this opportunity for us to serve, to service to this city. We ask God to continue lead, guide, and direct us that all that we share, say and do, will be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Bless oh God these that are present here today. This we pray in our son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On June 4th, 1919, the 19th Amendment, which stated the rights of citizens of the United States to vote should not be denied or breached by the United States or by any state on account of sex, passed both Houses of Congress and was sent to the states for ratification. Eight days later, the 19th Amendment took effect, thus giving women the right to vote. Fact of the day.
All right. One, one quick thing, if I may, if we can, moving forward, move the invocation and pledge just right after call to order before public comment. It's more traditional and proper to have that right before a public comment so that we're having prayers for everybody and pledge, and everybody can be here together. I think that's more appropriate moving forward.
Okay, approval of minutes? Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Bradley, any changes to the?
We will have one coming up. The applicant for public hearing number five on Ditch North, Annis Nation, has requested a continuance to the June 18th meeting, so that'll come up.
Which one now?
Public hearing number five. So that'll come up when we get to that item.
Continue to June?
18th.
Okay, all right. And then I guess we'll get to make the announcement that Commissioner last, I know she brought up last council meeting that she would not be here for this council meeting, but.
Correct, she's out of town, she'll be back next meeting.
Yeah, okay, just to confirm, okay. All right, next up, got a call a couple weeks ago from, from Parker Pridgen, who runs the Adventist Hospital here in Apopka, who also happens to sit on the Matthews Hope Board. And I've had the pleasure of meeting Scott, oof, 15, 12, 15 years, a long time ago, when he first got started in Winter Garden and, and all the impressive work that he does there in Winter Garden. And so we are, we're so excited about, you know, the, the opportunity to come forward and give us, you know, maybe an idea that we could move forward with as far as, as housing our, our homes. So Scott Blue from Matthews Hope, come on forward, please, sir.
Does this thing move by itself? Okay. I'm, I'm just sitting back here watching this thing go up and down, I was fascinated by it. It's the little things, yeah, that's probably perfect. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing us to, to speak with you today about some things we've been working on. Matthews Hope has been serving in Apopka now for, for 15 years, to the point that we've literally invested millions of dollars into the community through serving the homeless of this community. Our approach has been very different than most. Quite honestly, anybody can feed someone and give them secondhand clothing. What we do are looking to move people towards a life of independence and self-sustainability by making sure the tools that they have in their toolbox are there to get them to move forward. Understanding that the truth is that most of the folks we see on the, on the streets are going to die on those streets. That's just the facts. And so what we try to do with them is help to do whatever we can to help them have a more productive life, a better quality of life and what have you. And that can often be done through medications and what have you. The things that Matthews Hope often does that no one else does is quite honestly, is we have a mental health care team that actually comes into the field with us, that range from everything, from basic counseling to psychiatric, psychiatric care, to get people on the proper medications. So I, in this presentation, though it's about our sleeper buses, I want to make sure people understand that this is not an answer to homelessness. It will not eliminate homelessness. In fact, anybody who talks about eradicating homelessness clearly doesn't understand it, I'll just put it that way. What we can do is we can make a dent in it, we can make a change in how we approach it. Because doing it the same old, same old is going to get you the same results we're seeing right now. And if we leave it alone, if we leave it alone, I keep hearing people being, "Oh, I don't want to look like San Francisco, I don't want..." Well, San Francisco didn't want to look like San Francisco either, but they ignored it and kept kicking it down the curb. You know, it's funny, LA is another example. When, when, when there was just a couple roads of Skid Row, nobody thought much of it. When it became several miles on both sides of the street, suddenly the million-dollar problem became a billion-dollar problem. Now they want to address it and have no money to do it. Now, what we're presenting to you today, and I'm going to give you the whole outline to it, but if you look above, you'll see that there's pictures of what we are producing right now. Three of those are being built in Brevard County, so they're going into service at the end of this month. We are also talking with Orange County, what have you, have been wanting to do this as well. So the good news for you all is the ass today will cost you nothing. So everybody can let go of it, don't worry about sitting on your wallet. I'm not, I'm not asking for money, and a lot of people are asking for something. So let's start from there. I say mental health matters, sleeping safely matters. Now, what do the two have to do with each other? Most of us are aware of the new law that was put into place, State Statute 1365. Here's what it's accomplished so far. High anxiety of our homeless, okay? Imagine, Mayor, every night I walk into your home, and every couple hours I wake you up and simply ask you to move to the next room. What's your rest going to be like? Okay? Now imagine a flashlight flashing in your face every few hours and told to move along. Where can I go? Can't tell you that, but not here. And not here simply is not an answer. But that's what's happening. So the anxiety level is raised to where I'm watching grown men twice my size, literally breaking down and sobbing. They're sobbing because they're exhausted, they're sobbing because they've lost their jobs. Most of these folks, not most, many of these folks are, are, are serving the community and doing jobs that you and I don't want. They're in the bar at night, they're in the restaurant at night, they're cleaning and doing things like that. So they get off 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, they're just looking for a spot to rest. All of a sudden, they get incarcerated, and now they're a no-call, no-show, so now they've lost their job. Often what happens during that time, the same time, is they lose key information, like their DD-214 from the military service, their, their license, their social security card, what have you. And it takes us months to get those back to them again. And once they lose those, they can get no services anywhere, and they darn sure can't get a job. So that's a problem. Suicide rate is up. Baker Act calls is up. And I guarantee you, and I can prove it to you, that it's all tied to 1365. I'm going to show you a couple pictures here real quick. One person is actually sitting in this room. This is Shannon right here, she's now actually our director for Orange County. Yes, the picture above is her also, when she was a heroin addict before going through our program. She worked through our program. It's well deserved, and she's a rock star. She's not in that job because, because she can't do it, she's in that job because she knows it, okay? But Shannon came to us, she worked through our program, she had lost her children, she had lost her health, she had lost everything. And she worked her way through our Moving Forward Program. And when it came time for her to graduate, I said, "What do you want to do when you grow up?" And she goes, "I'd really like to do this kind of work." And I said, "Well, Shannon, quite honestly, with your felony, no one's going to hire you, but I don't play by the same rules." So she worked her way through our organization to where last April she was named the director of our campus in all of Orange County. The second gentleman is Donnie, he's on the left side. This is when we met Donnie out in the field during the pandemic. And he seemed very normal, very educated, well put together, and oddly put together for someone who was living on the streets. So we let him work our way into housing. We didn't realize anything was wrong until several weeks into it, when all of a sudden, one day, he's standing in my parking lot doing this. And he's just stuck this way until I went and spoke to him. We learned that what happened is Donnie had a severe head injury from being attacked, but he also was bipolar. So then it was, now what? Well, I can tell you now that this is the picture, Donnie on the bottom, he's now an employee of Matthews Hope, going out into the very community where we found him to talk to other homeless people. We got him on the proper medications and what have you, we actually let him drive our vehicles. And that's the short version. What's really important with homelessness is you've got to treat the whole person, physically, mentally, spiritually, and emotionally. And we're doing that. Now, what does that have to do with the buses? The buses have to do with this. Right now, when we can take people aside, we open up as a shelter. The buses have to do with this. Right now, when we can take people aside, we open up as a shelter for hurricanes and also for cold weather. And when we do that, we'll sleep between our two locations. We'll sleep anywhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty people a night. Okay. And during that time, you get to know people pretty well. You get to watch them and observe them. The bus gives us another opportunity to observe people, to find out what tools they have, what do they have that we can work with to move them forward towards a life of independence and self sustainability. But we got to quit treating symptoms. Mayor, if you were sitting in my office, at some point, if you had a runny nose, I can hand you tissues like hundred dollar bills, right? But at some point I got to ask myself, uh, does Brian have a cold? Is it allergies? Does he have a cocaine habit like I did? Because until I figure out what the cause is, there's nothing I can do by treating the symptoms. Matthews Hope goes after the symptoms. We spend money a lot more efficiently than anything you've ever seen before, and we've been awarded for that over and over again. We have to focus on what was the cause, because once that happens, then we can walk them out. This bus not only allows people to have an opportunity to get a good night's sleep, but it also allows them to, for allows us to observe them to see what we can do to move them forward. You'll see also, we have a full medical team, full medical team. We treat all kinds of stuff. We were able to do that and Advent Health is one of our partners in that. You'll also see that again, if you look at the pictures here, we're treating inside and outside. And we've been coming over here into Apopka now four days a week for the last at least six years. And before that, it was two days a week. We got to make it easy. We offer showers, haircuts, laundry service, medical assistance, mental health care, hurricane and cold weather shelter. We come and pick them up twice a week to take them into Winter Garden for our services and deliver them to the dismay of some. We bring them back and we deliver them to exactly where we found them. We never set up a pickup or a drop off point. You'll see, we also showing you a medical team bus. The reason we show you that, because again, when somebody needs medical attention, you just don't give them a bus pass and send them on their way. One of our nurses takes them to make sure that we got the proper follow-up care and that we get them into the proper medications they need. Getting a prescription and getting a referral does nothing. You've got to get them there and make sure the follow-up care. We're able to actually go into the portals of these hospitals and let our medical team look at what needs to follow-up care needs to be. Again, this all ties into what we're doing. You got to make it easy. We have a points program, uh, that provides opportunities for independence and self sustainability. Whenever you tour one of our campuses, and they are always open to be toured, these people you see in the, in the, in the grayish pewter shirts, they are homeless men and women moving their life forward. We pay them points as opposed to dollars, but dollars are back, those points are backed by real dollars and they can have eye surgery, get rid of their cataracts. Guess what happens when you get rid of your cataracts? You can work. You can see. We have their, have dental work done. Guess what happens when you got a nice smile? You get hired. We help them through all aspects of, of legal issues, mental health issues, um, physical, uh, uh, medical issues and right on down the line. So the point is, you got to make it easy. You got to make it complete. And all we're asking for, for, for Apopka to do, according to law thirteen sixty-five, it's written two ways, to paraphrase. You can be arrested, incarcerated for being homeless. That's just the bottom line. People can paint it anywhere they want to. If you read it, it's a very simple read. That's what it says. It also says, and I went up to Tallahassee before this went into law and spoke to our, our leaders up there. And what they said was the intent behind this law was to move people towards services. Well, if that's true, how exactly do they get those services? And who exactly is investing in that? The entire budget of the state of Florida is thirty-five million dollars to address homelessness. The budget for Matthews Hope, which only covers seventeen municipalities currently, is fifteen million. Do the math. It doesn't work. So we're offering the opportunity for Apopka to do is be a leader, step up, just give us a place to park. We come in, in the evening, around places between seven, eight o'clock at night. We have a, a, uh, the ability that they, they will set a, uh, they'll make a reservation. They can come on for twenty people. They can stay a minimum of three days, a maximum of three days on that bus, because there are a lot more than twenty people to serve. And then the next rotation, we will pick them up at various locations so they don't look like zombies walking towards a, a, a bus or wherever. Okay. We pick them up, we sit at one location overnight, we're gone roughly at seven AM the next morning. No one even knows we're there. This is not going to solve homelessness, but what it will do is it will impact in a very positive way, both the homeless and our community. And allow us an opportunity to identify those people that we can move towards that life of independence and self sustainability and figure out what needs to be done with the others that are literally going to die on our street one day. Any questions?
Commissioner Anderson?
So first Pastor Scott, thank you for the services that Matthew Hope has provided the community. And, um, it's an understatement to, to gratification that a lot of the homeless that I've spoken to have actually received for the services. So thank you all for that. Um, you mentioned a place to park.
Yes, ma'am.
So what does that look like? More than one location to park? What is ideal?
Ideal is probably having a couple that we can move from, because again, Apopka is a pretty good, pretty good sized place for a municipality. Uh, but I'd be happy with one place to park and knowing that we would come in there again in the evening after we picked them up. We sit right there. Each bus has a, a qualified in, uh, uh, security guard on the bus, along with the driver, plus the bus is set up with cameras as well. We also have the ability to secure their items and pets if necessary.
Have you identified a location that would be ideal in the city?
Have we identified a location? I, I know, I know the mayor and I have had some discussions about some possible properties, but that would really be up to you. The, the reality of it is, we should, according to the way five oh one C three ministries are set up, really park at any church. Whether or not someone's going to fight us on that or not is another topic.
Okay. Have you been in, have any type of conversations with any pastors, local churches in the area?
We've had a little bit of conversation, very little, because really we wanted to take this route first, because for me to get a church to agree to something only for the city, then turn around and, and possibly harass them is not what we're looking for. We're looking to make this as smoothly, smooth and as seamless as possible. It should be a very easy ask and answer.
Okay. So I think the first thing is, as a city, we need to, I guess, identify a location.
Well, I think first thing is to get the presentation. And if we.
Agree with it. Cause you're not asking just for a location.
We'll find a location.
Okay. So.
Say again, I'm sorry.
You said a location is kind of what you guys are looking for, a location from the city.
Yeah, what hap, the concern right now is we have the money to put this program together. That money is in, in place to be able to build the buses out. Like I said, the ones I currently have are all over in Brevard County. Uh, but Orange County is working with us here and what have you. It really, the concern is, is before you pull that final trigger, will we have a place to park it? We already have a partner over in Winter Garden for a place to help us dump our tanks, uh, to be able to run them through washing, a big, literally, think of a Greyhound car wash. Uh, so we have a place, uh, to work with over in Winter Garden to do that. Uh, we have our teams that can clean those facilities up. What will happen is each day the sheets will be changed and everything will be disinfected, ready for the next night. But we have places to do that. This is where do we park it between roughly seven, eight PM until seven AM the next morning.
Okay. So I guess I'm definitely, I think it's more so that the, at the will of the council in regards to a location, I'm definitely in support of a location.
The, the good news is, is it doesn't require much because there is a, there is bathrooms on the bus and what have you. So it's self-contained. Ideally, if there's someone to work with that maybe offers some other services over in Brevard County, I can tell you, we have some places that the churches want to provide a meal for them when they're there. Um, that's great. Uh, what I'm saying, we don't need anything, but we're open to everything.
Okay. So, um, excuse me, city attorney, in regards to liability, what type of liability was that like in the city? City, any type of liability with the city, with city property or anything in regards to if anyone get hurt or what does that liability looks like for the city?
Uh, that depends. You know, if there's an agreement, especially if there's some sort of indemnification agreement between the organization and the city, there, there are ways to, uh, mitigate any type of risks, of course. Uh, you know, it, it depends on the property, if it is city-owned property, what the city's property interest is in it. Um, and, you know, what actually occurred that gave rise to the liability. But, um, a lot of it can be mitigated by, uh, agreement and of course the, the city has insurance policy.
Okay. So I guess in regards to a location and the agreement to make sure the, any type of liability or any type of insurance. So would Matthew Hope be responsible for that insurance or it just depends on, what does that look like?
It depends on what ultimately, you know, comes forth in the agreement. Of course, one of the things I'll, I'll mention, for the city to be liable requires some sort of negligence or, uh, some sort of, uh, you know, intentional act upon the city that would give rise to liability in the first place. Um, but, uh, you know, again, I, I think it just matters as to, to what the ultimate agreement is between the organizations and, and certainly you can, uh, request insurance. Coverage be provided for the, the city area.
Do you currently have, does your organization currently have any type of insurance?
Oh, good Lord, you have no idea.
I, I just asked.
It's my greatest, it's my greatest expense. And we will never file a claim because they'd cancel on us, right? But yeah, we, we have liability insurance. There's, there's ability, there's, we have layers and layers of insurance, more than I care to have, but we, we are covered from head to toe.
North Florida questions. I'm excited about potential partnership and looking for a location. So.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other questions?
Commissioner Smith?
Uh, well, I'd just like to say, I visited Matthew Hope probably six years ago now.
Oh, you should see it now.
And, uh, and I was very impressed with the process and what you're using. And, uh, and I like the idea of you using the points instead of actually giving cash. And, uh, it's something that I, I would, um, support in whatever way we can do to make this happen and make it become a reality.
I appreciate it. And, and Commissioner, we invite you back. You would be stunned to where, how far it's come since you last saw it.
Oh, okay. Mr. Nesta?
Absolutely. Thank you for taking the time to be here and sorry it's taken so long to invite you guys to be here as well. Obviously, you've been serving this community quietly for, for years now, and it's great to see you guys front and center now, not from your own delays, but ours on our end. Uh, in reference to Orange County, the Brevard buses are going to be exclusively staying there, correct?
Yes, sir.
So you have new Orange County buses, hopefully, correct? So what does that timeline look like? What can we expect, uh, I guess, to see you those buses?
Once we know we have a place to go, we can pull that trigger and you're probably looking about a hundred and twenty days out from that. So certainly by the end of the year, possibly quicker. Uh, the first bus, because we designed it from scratch, literally it became, if you've ever built something before, that became our template, if you will. So that's taken the longest. Uh, so the first one takes longer and then you start going out. We're using the exact same type of bus each time. Uh, we have a relationship with a bus company in Brevard that literally can look at a bus and tell us what year it is. And then says to me, Scott, you're paying too much. Let's go take you over there. So they're helping us purchase the buses based on getting the biggest bang for our buck. Lowest mile is the, the latest newest, and we're doing all identical that way. And we also had them, take them into the service department. We brought in three different buses and they looked at what are the easiest ones to, to repair. And so we settled on this particular model that you see in this picture.
Okay. And then in reference to Orange County, and they're, they're providing the funding for this, correct?
Yes.
So do they have any requirements or stipulations of how you can use these, where you can use these, anything of that nature?
No, their, their only requirement is I try to get as many homeless people off the streets we can at night.
Excellent.
It's, it's been a very nice process. Of course, it helps when you're already well ahead of that game in Brevard already, so they could look at that as a, as a concept.
Absolutely. You, you've already proven that it, it works successfully. Uh, a couple of final questions here. The location itself, are there any kind of wish lists or absolute needs, or can you give me a kind of a list of everything we'd want? And then the absolute things we have to have at that location?
The, the simple answer is, I need a place to park. The bigger answer is, and we've talked about this over the years, is, is possibly having a, um, for lack of a better term, a substation here in, in Apopka that we could do general service, basic services there, and then still transport everybody over to Winter Garden when say they need to see my psychiatric nurse practitioner or something like that. Um, what we have over there is eleven thousand square feet. That's not even including our houses, our preschool and everything else. Uh, that's just our, our outreach center. So that's a pretty big investment. But if, if we could identify a smaller building that could be something like that, that one, that maybe the bus can park at at the same time, but we can provide some basic services and then still transport everybody over. I think it could be very beneficial to Apopka and certainly we would have the ability to manage that well.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that. And Mayor, did you have any specific location that you were already identifying or?
No, I just, I mean, I just wanted to get the kind of green light from the council that there's something we'd like to pursue and then we can, I would say if, if, you know, we'll reach out to some of the churches in the local area. Also look, identify some of the city properties we have that we, if we wanted to use them. Um, I think that's, so it sounds like we're all in agreement. Uh, so if you'd like, we'll, we'll, you want to bring it back next, next council meeting for, for, if you'll, uh, Andrew, if you'll get us, get with Matthews Hope and work out some, an agreement. Obviously they'll need to have insurance, but we'll want to have it as well. And if, if we do partner with the church, I mean, I would, I would recommend that the city council pay for their insurance. Cause I don't, you know, they're helping us and, you know, whatever burden we could take off a, the location, if it's not city property. So let's say it's, I mean, I'm thinking my, where my mom goes to church, first, first church, you got the big, the big property would be a great location. You know, they feed on Friday at lunches. Be a great location. Don't know if they're interested, but I think that we as a city, uh, I, I'm, I'm not looking for, you know, a handout. I, I want to be a hand up. So I think that we as a, as we go through our, we're getting now into our budget season. I think as, as a council, I think we need to commit dollars. We're not, I'm not asking for you to do it for free. So, I mean, I think.
I appreciate that. And I will tell you that, that often the insurance, though, typically they're riders that have to be added. We would add a rider to that, to that location and vice versa. Uh, typically it's more, that falls more on us than it does them, though as little as my, I mean, it costs a fraction. I mean, it's not much at all to do the rider and I would suggest that anyhow, just as a, look. The good news is, we don't have problems. I mean, we really don't. We, on our locations, both locations have roughly fifty cameras with, with facial recognition at three hundred feet. It's beyond me how a bank or even a seven eleven gets robbed and they can't tell what's happening. In a ministry, I can count the hairs on your nose, you know, I don't understand it. But, but the point is, is we take every possible precaution. I will tell you that we are, uh, we are contracting with a security company. So that way we have a constant access to those. Uh, our feelings are, I really am not interested in armed, other than they would be armed with the tasers and things like that. Um, they, it's been offered to us. I don't see a reason for that. Uh, we just really don't have those issues. Keeping in mind also, we know the population so well, everybody that goes to Matthews Hope, by the way, everyone has had a background check done. Every single one of them over the last fifteen years. We're not looking to disqualify you. We're looking to understand who you are. So that is kind of in our favor that we already know the community. So we kind of know if there's someone that could be some trouble, what have you, and we'll deal with it appropriately, appropriately.
So if you have an agreement that you, that maybe with Brevard County or something, we could, if you could just shoot that over to Radley or myself and we'll, I would maybe have, if you've got.
No one's asked for one yet. No one has asked for one yet.
Really? No agreement at all?
No.
Just insurance?
No, they've just, all they've done is get a rider on their insurance. That's all anybody's done and, and wanted to know what else they could do for us.
Okay. Well, we'll bring it up for a formal, um, agreement for the next council meeting, which will be the seventeenth at right? Eighteenth at seven o'clock.
Awesome. Should I be here?
You, you got it.
Okay.
Expect you to be here.
Take care.
We've actually been here today and, and I'd love to have a little more discussion at the end of this meeting too. So if you can stay, great. If not, I understand you guys' schedule is busy.
Well, since I, I'm diabetic and I didn't eat before I got here, I don't get nervous, but man, I need to use something.
Thank, thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Team for coming out.
Be blessed.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Dr. Jim Moyer, Soil and Water.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name's Dr. Jim Moyer. I'm retired. I happen to be retired from the Salvation Army Adult Rehabilitation Center, where a large portion of our beneficiaries were homeless. So I have to start by commending Matthews Hope. Uh, God bless them. I am currently serving on the Orange Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Supervisors, along with these folks here that you see on the slide. It's an elected volunteer position to a totally unfunded state agency, just for clarification. And everything in this presentation is based on my research. So I'm starting out with a disclaimer. Uh, so the, it's Understanding Soil and Water Conservation District. It's mostly history. Uh, and I have a color coding I put into that. So let's dig into it. Eighteen sixty-two, there were three significant events related to this. First, the US Department of Agriculture was created and six years later, what became, uh, the Florida Department of Agriculture and Conservation Services. That's important because they administer, uh, Chapter five eighty-two Soil and Water Conservation in Florida statutes. Land grant universities were created, number two. Land Grant Universities were created number two. Here in Florida, we have the predecessor of University of Florida, and we have Florida A&amp;M University. Couple of years later, they also were authorized for research and extension. Here in Orange County, we have research here in Apopka, we have extension in East Orlando. Next, the Homestead Act, which becomes very important here. 20% of the Great Plains area was populated by the Homestead Act. Basically, it was a deal, they got free land in exchange for farming. It was in place for over a century. 15% of all the United States were formerly, well, the lower 48, were formerly homesteaders, and 10% of Florida. Skipping forward to 1914 to 1935, World War I was in place. The Great Plains area produced wheat, not just for the United States, not just for our troops, but for basically all the Allied troops in Europe. There was a great demand for the wheat from the Great Plains area, but it came at a cost. After the war, in 1919, 1920, there was an economic boom in the United States. They call it the roaring twenties, but that wasn't true for the agricultural industry, especially in the Great Plains. They had excess wheat that they couldn't sell. If you think about that time, that point in time, there were also opportunities and a lot of, take advantage of it, of tractors. Gas-powered tractors came in to be in. A lot of the farmers invested and went into debt because of it. And there was rain during the 1920s, but it ended up leaving no topsoil. And in 1930s, there was not only the Great Depression, but the Dust Bowl came almost the whole entire decade. In the Great Plains area, there was no rain. The temp went up, the wind went up, and there were dust clouds everywhere. On what they call Black Sunday, April 14, 1935, people in the Great Plains area thought the world was coming to an end. That's how devastating it was. The dust blizzard not only extended to the East Coast, it extended 300 miles into the Atlantic Ocean. And at that time, they determined there was a need for soil conservation. Here's a brief picture of probably the 1910s or 20s, when there was a lot of wheat production, and during the Dust Bowl. The period 1935 to 1965. Because of the Dust Bowl, they created what's now the Natural Resource Conservation Service, and they created what the Standard State Soil Conservation District Act was created. In 1937, the president asked all the states to enact it. So an important point here is all the states in the United States started off with the same language, the same act. Now, it has changed over time, but, okay. And what, in essence, that act did was enable local soil and water conservations to be created. And we were chartered here in Orange County in 1945, so we're eight years old. In 1965, the U.S. government created what they called the Water Quality Act. And approximately half of the soil conservation districts changed their name. And Florida was one of them. Then became the Soil and Water Conservation District. By 1965, continuing all the way through today, there's approximately 3,000 conservation districts. In 1970, because of pollution, the U.S. Environmental Protection Act was created. 1972, the Clean Water Act was enacted. And here in Florida in '72, we created the Water Management District. There's five now. Originally, it was six, but it went down to five. And they're now part of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The Soil and Water Conservation Districts work with the Water Management Districts, as well as the Land Grant University, UF. In 1999, Florida created a Water Restoration Act, and we're still under that, basically. It basically said that the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Service had to work together and eliminate the pollution in our numerous lakes. As you probably know, Florida has more bodies of water than any state in the lower 48. So that's a great advantage for us, but the disadvantage is pollution. In 2020, for the first time in 25 years, the U.S. Environmental Protection Act, and it allowed Florida to issue its own 404 permits under the Clean Water Act. The general mission, according to the National Association of Consumer Districts, is to coordinate landowner assistance from all sources. So we need to partner. We need to partner with public and private, all forms of government, to develop locally-driven solutions for conservation of healthy soil, clean water, and environment. And as you know, here in our area, we have a diversity of agricultural industry. And specific to Florida, the law says, provide assistance, guidance, and education to landowners, land occupiers, the agricultural industry, and the general public, and implement land and water resource protection practices. Now, this is a long slide, I'm not going through it all, but the bottom line here is, within the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Service, there's an Office of Agricultural Water Policy. And they and us are to work together, and all the Soil and Water Conservation Districts in Florida, is to work together for agricultural best management practices. We have made some progress in Orange County, according to UF, but there's still some ways to go. So we want to partner and implement this program. As Mr. Mayor, you probably know, since you've served in, in the state there, that the Office of Agricultural Water Policy only has one satellite office. So even though we're independent, the Soil and Water Conservation Districts, we can work together to help implement this program. This is very important, and I said this yesterday at the commission meeting. When nature speaks, we need to listen. Prior to the Dust Bowl, for a whole century, nature was telling the Great Plains area that it was basically what I call bipolar. It rained a lot, droughted a lot. And that went on for a whole century, but we didn't listen to nature, and then became the Dust Bowl. So now, nature is speaking again. It's called climate change. The same environmental conditions that were in place during the Dust Bowl are here again. High temperature, high wind. And it's going to ultimately lead to agricultural, it's going to go into our rivers and water bodies and pollute it, which we're trying to work against. So I encourage all hands on deck, because our planet needs it. And if we save the earth, we're actually saving life, human life. So thank you all for your time. God bless you, and have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Doc.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Moore. Quick question, in regards to the program, the partnership, what does that look like from the local standpoint of the city? When you say partnership with the program, what does that look like?
We're actually need to partner for ourselves. Right now, I'm working on a partnership with the Orange County, where they're going to give us more in-kind services. The only in-kind services we have right now is a place to meet. And we do have Orange TV, but it's not pu- public right now. But it will be live soon. That's part of the agreement for in-kind services. And of course, we need support. We're eight years old, and basically, we have little or no money.
So the in-kind services will be like a location to provide educational services to the community? I'm just trying to understand what that looks like.
Excellent question. When I sent my letter for support to Orange County, I compared it to Hillsborough Soil and Water Conservation District. They have five different locations in their county where they meet. So yes, if we could periodically come out to the public to ask for their support. And of course, we need people to help. We're here to help. I'm a volunteer to help. So if you know farmers or people in agricultural business that want to partner, I'm here. What can I do to make sure they have best management practices? Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Smith?
I'm good.
Commissioner Nesta?
Dr. Moore, thank you so much for being here. You're always at every meeting since you've been elected. You're at this meeting, I see at Orange County, so you're everyone. I appreciate you being so active in your role, so thank you for that. And thank you for taking the time to do this presentation as well. It's definitely educational. It helps us understand where we've come and what we do, need to do to move forward. So I know if you've been in our meetings, you've seen that we're dealing with a lot of water issues right now, all throughout our city. So I think it'd be very valuable to have you in these conversations as we move forward of how to fix them, how to make sure that we're not hurting our planet just by fixing one small issue and making one much bigger down the road. So again, I appreciate it, and I'm sure I'll be reaching out to your office just to set up some type of meetings to see how we can further partner, especially on the resolutions here locally.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And again, God bless you. God bless you all.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. All right, we have six consent agenda items. Anybody from the dais or from the public needs to pull any of these. If not, look for a motion to approve the six consent agenda items.
Well, I want to pull number four, please.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Can I pull number six as well, please?
Okay. Need to revise the motion. We want to approve consent agenda items 1, 2, 3, and 5. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, Bobby, I guess, item number four on consent.
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell. Item number four on consent requests the reappointment of three planning commission members, Mr. William Gussler, Mr. Wes Doomey, and Ms. Mary Norwood to a three-year term.
Any questions for Bobby?
Yeah, so, and we discussed this during our, and thank you for that, we discussed this during my agenda review. The LDC, the Land Development Code, describes and kind of outlines how these meetings should be ran, the planning commission specifically. And I'd asked the question, are we following the provisions in reference to absences and discussions that come along with that? So in here, it says specifically that if somebody misses two consecutive meetings without approval, there needs to be a discussion at that next meeting. And your answer was?
No.
Correct. So we're not following the provisions that are built into this land development code. So we want to make sure that, I guess, how do we move forward, making sure that that's handled properly? Who's overseeing this to make sure that the code is being followed within this commission?
Right. What we could do is, whenever we are aware of an absent, since, we could alert the chairman and let them know. And then, because the chairman is the one that runs the meetings.
Okay. So the chairman should be the one that's already handling this, and they have not.
That's my understanding. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then additionally, since we are moving forward with charter amendments for this council, and one specifically is term limits, I think it would also be valuable to add that into this section of our LDC as well, to put in term limits for the residents that are serving, because there's going to be more out there that do want to serve. And when, it's always good to have new blood coming in to give new outlooks and opinions, especially with a growing city. So how can we move forward with that to get some changes implemented properly with this?
Well, we, number one, have to amend the land development code, because this is in the land development code and the city's land development code. So you'd have to have the planning commission would be limited to two terms or whatever the duration would be to be consistent with the city council.
I think that'd be very valuable to do. So what's the, I guess, timeline for us to be able to do that? Because we can do, isn't that something we're similar, we did like glitch amendments? So it'd be similar to that.
Be a text amendment to the land development code.
Okay. So is that something the council would be willing to look at or vote on down the road, is term limits for the planning commission?
What is the term, Mr. Carter?
It's a three-year term, but they can be reappointed to consecutive terms. It doesn't matter, it doesn't specify.
Yes, we don't have, there's no term limits. They're similar to our board. But if we're going to change our board, and we're putting that to the charter, I think it would be, it would make sense to do that to this commission as well, just mimic ours effectively. So if everyone's okay with that?
I will have to do further research to see if other areas are doing it. I don't want to just make a decision on the fly without any type of research.
No, absolutely not. No, I don't want to make a decision right now. I just, I think it's something we need to explore. Just again, similar to the glitch amendments, as we start seeing some things not be consistent, let's just start making consistent actions moving forward. So I think, as long as you're open to reviewing it, I think, let's bring it up on the next agenda to discuss. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Well, I would say when we bring up the land development code, when we come, that comes back up. I don't think we need to do it before then.
When is that coming back up?
Land development code would have to be rewritten to be consistent with the comp plan rewrite, which that comp plan is coming back on just 2nd of July, because we had to do the scope of the review based on Senate Bill 180 provisions. Following the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, then the land development code has to be rewritten to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. So that would probably be within a year or so.
Say that again?
Be within a year or so.
Okay, how many different, it's a three-year term, so do we have anybody expire, or their term expiring within that next year?
I would have to go back and double check. I don't believe so off the top of my head, but I would have to go back and confirm.
Okay.
Our records.
Well, if we, my request is that we add this as an adjustment to the LDC as we're coming along with our normal timeline. Again, it's going to mimic our charter, and I think it's advantageous to do.
Take a look at it when we.
Yeah, we can look at the term limits then, yes.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve consent agenda item number four.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, authorize the amendment of a contract to the assigned terms, Bryant Miller Oliver, P.A.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Blaine Chairman, Finance Director. The item before you is the execute, a contract amendment for Bryant Miller Olive, P.A. They are a bond counsel. They worked with us on the special assessment for Emerson Park subdivision. We estimated at the time that that cost would be about $75,000. We've, they have some additional expenses, so we need to increase that amount. We've also added some language in here that allows us to extend it over to 75, and also to include within budgetary appropriations going forward.
Any questions for Blaine?
Sure, and thank you for that. We discussed this briefly in my agenda review as well. This is specific to Emerson Park, correct? This expense is specific to Emerson Park and their process to get their streets and roads properly done.
The expense that I referenced, yes, but this contract is our bond counsel, but yes.
Sure. So it's extending there, but the added expense is specific to Emerson Park.
Yes, it is.
So we budgeted $75,000. We're changing it from up to $75,000 to within budgetary appropriations, is the quote. So any additional? So any additional appropriation would then be passed, it would pass through to Emerson Park, correct?
Oh, yes, it'll be a part of the special assessment.
So this is more so just we're fronting it and then it's passed on to Emerson Park?
It's included in the special assessment and now, yes, calculated.
Understood, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, anybody from public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve the, the amendment of the contract with the assigned terms for Bryant Miller Olive, P.A.
Some of-
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three B plat, replat. Bobby?
Good afternoon, for the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. This is a replat of lots two twenty-five through two twenty-eight at the Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three B subdivision to accommodate a loft line shift for the accommodation utilities. There's existing lots within an existing neighborhood. Lot two twenty-eight has decreased in width by fifteen feet, and lot two twenty-five has increased in width from fifty-five to seventy feet. There are no additional changes. The plan is consistent, or the plot is consistent with the approved major development plan, construction site plan, and with Florida Statute 177. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. The recommended motion this afternoon is approval. Myself and the applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve replat for Phase Three B of the Oaks at Kelly Park.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand ninety-eight.
Ordinance number three thousand ninety-eight. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city residential, very low suburban. For property located at twenty-five oh one Rock Springs Road, owned by BSC Rock Springs East LLC, comprising nine point six-three acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Good afternoon, this is June Son, Planner at the Community Development Department. The applicant has requested a small-scale future land use amendment for the property located at twenty-five oh one Rock Springs Road. The size of the property is nine point six-three acres, and the property is currently vacant. The current future land use is county rural, and the applicant has requested to amend it to RVLS, residential very low suburban, allowing a maximum of two dwelling units per acre. Surrounding properties has land use of county rural and institutional. The years, the Development Review Committee has recommended approval, and the Planning Commission has anonymously recommended approval of amending the future land use from county rural to RVLS for the property located at twenty-five oh one Rock Springs Road. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three oh nine eight and hold it over for the second reading and adoption on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The applicant has prepared the presentation to briefly introduce their, about their projects.
Any questions first for June before we go to the applicant? Okay.
Good afternoon, Elizabeth Crane, on behalf of the applicant. Just a little presentation of what we're trying to do with this property here. This is the proposed site plan. It's eighteen single-family home lots. They're going to be eighty-five feet in width, so quite large. The starting price point for the homes that they're planning on developing on the lots would be eight hundred and fifty thousand. And the applicant has completed two market studies, and in both of those, the numbers are supported. Amenity options as part of the development or proposed development would be dog walk, a picnic setup, a gazebo, and others. Our goal here is to keep and save as many of the existing trees as possible. There will also be a lift station installed. The builder is going to be Hammock. It's the same building that was hired for Hammock, which is the property located at two-six-zero-zero Rock Springs. And the designer is Ray Holmes. We also had a community meeting with residents in the surrounding property area, and they were in support of the development. These are some proposed model homes for examples. I know you guys have seen these before, but... And then the development we're proposing here is going to be very similar to the one across the street, which is just a little north. It's at two-six-zero-zero Rock Springs Road. And as you can see, these are large, single-family home lots. These are actually eighty feet in width, and the ones we're proposing are eighty-five feet width. And I'm available for any questions. We also have a representative for the owner as well, if you have any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand ninety-eight at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So on this one, actually, before we take a vote, there was a couple of questions. Well, not a couple of questions, but it was, I guess, concerns of, does this project properly mimic the surrounding properties? And the properties around it are mostly agriculture or larger lot, five-plus acres, two-and-a-half-plus acres acreage in the area, and there's nothing on this side of the street within a decent amount. I, I don't have the exact-
So this property is one of the first property that has been annexed from, from the county to city. And then, that's why we are requested low density, which is because this is in Waukega Study area. So per the comprehensive plan, the only, um, density they can have is two dwelling units per acre, and they are applying for that density.
June, can you pull up, do we have a map of the? There we go. Oh, there you go. Okay, so that's the-
Sure, so everything on the east side of Rock Springs Road here is, is mostly larger lots.
They're half-acre.
These aren't half-acre lots that are going in there. These are about third acre, correct? About third acre lots that are going to be in here?
We just-
Yeah. So, so these are not similar to the lots that it's, that surround this parcel, is my concern. Is that, yes, across the street on the west side, there is development that's going in there, but, and we have a lot of traffic issues in this area with the school across the street. So ingress, egress is going to be a little messy, especially during school drop-off and pickup. So I'm interested to see how that would work. But again, how does it show, or is it compatible with the surrounding area? And I don't think that it is.
Well, county's properties is rural, allowing like one per ten acre, one dwelling per acre. But city, per our comprehensive plan, city allows maximum to have, to have a maximum two dwelling per acre. So once they annexed, to the property, they have a right to change their future land use to allow maximum two dwelling per acre, which is across the street. So they are following the comprehensive plan.
So, and, and I understand that, again, it's, it doesn't match the, the area. And then, it's within the Waukega, I made this wrong. Well, it's obviously within-
Protection.
Is it the protection area?
Yes.
So, and that concerns me as well, just being within this close proximity to the springs on that side of the road specifically. So, and again, if Orange County is limiting the amount of density they're going to have on that side, we're the only project, Apopka is going to be the only project that has that type of density with, that's abutting this property. So, and I, I understand what you're saying. The LDC does provide, once you're annexed, your lowest density effectively is two per acre. So I understand, I understand where you're coming from there. I just don't think that it properly is consistent with the neighboring parcels in that area. Again, they're mostly agriculture properties and, and just larger lots, some equestrian. I mean, I know there's an equestrian area out there that, a lot of horse property, things of that nature. So that's my concern with this one is just, is it compatible and similar to the surrounding area there? And I don't know if we can do enhanced buffers or something along those lines?
Well, so for regarding the compat- compatibility, so if we compare this property with our city limit, it is, it is definitely compatible with, like, has the same density, but it's kind of like, county has their own, like, comprehensive plan, their code. So it's, we cannot, like, actually compare to their properties. Once this is annexed to the city, I think it is right to compatible to our cities.
I understand, we, we're not trying to compare, and that's not what I'm trying to do either, is I'm not trying to compare LDCs to LDCs. It's not, they're not comparable. But my point is, is that if Orange County in this area isn't going to be doing this type of density, then we shouldn't be doing it either. It, it doesn't seem compatible for the area. So I guess that's my concern is, and then are we creating a little enclave here with that too? And by enclave, I mean not on the real estate side, not so much on the planning side of. It's just one small neighborhood, again, with traffic across, with the school here. It becomes problematic. I'm just concerned about the additional issues that come along with this. And again, that the surrounding properties that are abutting this one, directly abutting this property, are much larger sites with agriculture property and things of that nature.
For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager, the property was annexed. It met statutory requirements for annexation. It's contiguous, it's compact. It is within the Waukega, as Dr. Son was saying. So it's within the Waukega protection area, which our comprehensive plan caps at two dwelling units per acre. So once a property is annexed in, it is then required to be assigned a future land use. This is a legislative item. So at this point, it's a policy decision of the council as to whether or not they agree with the applicant's request. Staff evaluated it. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. The, the lot sizes are consistent with the lot sizes, the proposed lot sizes that you'll hear in the rezoning item, companion item on the next hearing, are consistent with what's in the city to the west. Yes, you are correct, Commissioner Nesta. Nothing in the city, or everything over here is primarily county. It's remnant agricultural parcels, but they have, they have annexed into the city.
Bobby, aren't they coming, I mean, some of the other ones are coming forward here?
Yes, in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
There was a, a policy to cap density north of Sebastian Springs Lane on the east side here at one unit per acre. However, per Senate Bill 180, we have to keep that at two, because that would be a burdensome regulation on somebody.
So we already approved development on the west side already?
Yeah, there's all sorts of approved developments on the west side. Over here, these are forty-foot lots. This was approved back in twenty eighteen, I believe. This is Sebastian Springs. This is, I think, Alexandria Place or something that's been there for years and years. De Salvo Place, same thing. But like I said, this is a legislative item, so it's a action of the council. It's a policy decision.
And then how far down, coming back south on Rock Springs Road till you get to the townhomes? Because that's only what-
Yeah, the townhomes are actually visible in this aerial photograph here and then here as well. And all of this is within the Waukega. The Publix at Rock Springs Road is within the Waukega Study area as well.
And again, my concern too, in addition to, it's not comparable to the surrounding properties, that the actual traffic is going to be an absolute disaster there with, again, with school starting and stopping during summer, it's not going to be as much of an issue. But specific to in the morning, in the afternoon, those cars are lined up on Rock Springs Road, very far back. So getting out of this neighborhood and heading south is going to be a real difficult problem. And then heading south, turning west, or, well, I guess, east into the property is going to be almost impossible during that time as well. So I don't know, is there a plan to mitigate that in some way? Or is it just the road is sufficient?
And they'll have to do a traffic study per Land Development Code. I'll let the applicant speak to that requirement if they've already pursued that. Every development that comes in has to do a traffic study, geotechnical exploration, environmental assessment, level one. So that's all handled through the development review process. Our code requires a right turn lane leading into the site when the speed limit's over thirty-five miles an hour. That's something they'll have to do as well. But if you want to have the applicant address a little bit more in detail.
Miguel Caletto, three oh five Edgewater Drive, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-zero-four. Good afternoon to everybody. I represent the investor of this property. Matter of fact, around central Florida, we could be considered a medium to large investor due to the sites and, and size of the sites that we have. And Apopka, it's, it's becoming our, our preferred place to invest. This would be our third site. It's already purchased. We, we are, are asking for annexation. Orange County, we counseled them before. They agreed, City of Apopka agreed, and we are following everything by the book, the way we did with the other two sites. With this one, I agree with, with Commissioner Nick about the, the school, but eighteen houses won't make a big impact, and that will be proven by a traffic study. I'm a civil engineer, well, I was one day, but I already know that the impact is not going to be great. And trying to improve what we are doing, we just retain a landscape architect to try on this site what he called a butterfly corridor. That's a set of hardscape and landscape that attracts butterflies, birds, and, and some other small species of frogs. That brings beauty to the site, that works on polarization for, for, for plants. And here is a, a small little frog eats every night two hundred bugs. So if this works on that site, it's pretty easy to spread all over Rock Springs Corridor. And Rock Springs Corridor, the way we are seeing, is the main corridor for the city of Apopka. It's our interest that this corridor become enhanced every, every, every time a new development comes into town. And, and, and that's the future of, of Rock Springs Corridor. This site, the owner called us, offering the site for us to buy. And, and some other calls we are receiving as well. So it is, I think, the fate of Rock Springs to be maybe the nicest corridor in town. And we are trying as much as we can to collaborate with that. Our, our plans, you know, it's Ray Holmes, but they are really designed by Urban Perch, which is a custom-built home. We use the base plans from Ray Holmes, and we adapt as a custom homes. For you to have an idea, we place signs, it's not on the internet yet, but we place for sale signs on this one and the other one on Poncon Road. And we have six interested people. Believe it or not, three of them wants to build custom homes. And more expensive and, and even, even bigger than the ones that we are offering. So our sites are really, they have a good appeal. People like them. And the way we are presenting, the way we are offering options. I tell my investors, we may be, we may be, we have larger sites and, and a great number of sites of central Florida, but we cannot compete with the big builders. The only way we can compete with them is offering a better product, better design, better material, and be competitive on price. We cannot have the same margin of profit of the larger buildings. You can't, just simply cannot. But yes, we can have a decent profit, we can have a good, good business if you offer a better design, a better product with better materials, and especially a, a better customer service. That's what we have been offering Poncon, on Rock Springs, Sanford, UCF, Lake Wales, Ponticiana, and College Park. Any questions? I'll be, I'll be-
No, and I appreciate that too. And, and by no means is it a tack on the product or what the lot size, obviously, I prefer bigger lot size. I think a lot of residents do, which is why it demands a higher price as well, and people buy them.
Yeah.
What I'm, and I don't think the eighteen homes is going to add to traffic. That, that wasn't my comment.
You are correct.
I'm going to get the calls, though, when you guys are done and out of here of, why would you guys approve this project? I can't even get out of my neighborhood. It takes me forty-five minutes to get out of here. My kid is trying to cross the street, and they have to go up half a mile to then cross and get back over, or they're going to get hit by a car. It's a forty-five mile an hour street. So these are my concerns. It's not right now, it's in the future, when, again, when your project's completed, I'll be the one here still, taking the calls, serving the residents, making sure that they're happy and served and safe, and there's traffic issues there already. Before your projects even here, there's traffic issues.
I understand, but this, this happens everywhere. The city is growing. When we talk about Apopka, everybody likes Apopka. You know, people are willing to, to move here, so there's no other way. We will have problems, and the problems, they need to be solved. That's why we all here. You know, there's, there's no way, you know, children are born every day. There's no way. We, we have to face, and we have to offer whatever we have the best, and understanding the- and understanding the problems, understanding people's needs. But this is a locomotive. It, it won't stop. That's the truth. We are, we are in central Florida. We are in the most desirable place in the entire country to live. It's our fate.
I understand, and, and I appreciate it. Again, there are concerns that I'm going to have to deal with down the road though. So that, that's, that's.
But I appreciate your, your concerns, that, that those notes are, are valuable for us. And, uh, and, and, and we, 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 we noticed that, uh, the city, the city council cares about the city. That, that's, that's good to hear.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public wish to speak?
Leroy Bell, Marth Helen. I, I appreciate Commissioner Nesta, what you're talking about, the traffic. And I said, in two thousand seventeen, when I ran, anybody coming into the city that's building, no matter what it is, they need to be a good steward of Apopka, starting with infrastructure. The gentleman just spoke and said, you know, it's going to be problem. We got problems already. You go, you come out here on Vineyard Road. All this stuff that they to put in out there, you know what, what their, what their solution is? They to put, uh, what they call it, a turnaround, a turnabout, a roundabout. They to put a roundabout. Had nobody took and did any studies, whatever this development board that they got up here is a crap. This gentleman saying that eighteen, eighteen more units ain't going to do nothing. No, it's not. It's not going to do anything for, against the eighteen unit, but what about the surrounding people? You got to worry about not just these eighteen, you got to worry about the people that's around. It's nothing wrong with growth, but manage, manage growth. You just packing peoples of, on, of, of above people. It makes no sense. It has to stop somewhere. And he just, the gentleman just came up and told you just the clearest thing. That this quarter is earmarked to be one of the main quarters to come through Apopka. And, and I, I, I beg to differ. I, I don't know nobody dying to move into Apopka with the environment, with the leadership that we have. And with the leadership trying to get in, it make no sense. But yet and still, we putting the cotton ahead of the heart. He said, well, I'm pretty sure that the traffic study going to say this. No, 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 no. Don't vote on pretty sure. What I would ask you to do respectfully, get all the information upfront. Get the traffic studied. I don't care if it one house, two or four. Get the traffic studied first before you make a decision.
Auburn McKemay, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. At public comment tonight, I made the point, what we require to do is managed development. Here, we're trying to lock the door once the horse has already bolted. We've annexed this into the city. We're now really faced with treating the developer the same as we treat every other developer. If he has been given the right to build two houses per home, then he should have that right. The problem that we face here is if you're not satisfied with that, you should have never let him get annexed into the city in the first place. So the suggestion I made earlier on tonight was about increasing the size of the KPI. And the reason I made that suggestion is it allows us the ability to prevent annexation or to slow down these developments in a manner where the infrastructure can either catch up with it or we can get the infrastructure in place before we, we, we have that. I hate the, the fact that, you know what, we allow people to invest in the city. And I'm not in favor of, of, of Kelly Park and that area becoming large scale development. I'd rather keep the natural beauty as to where it is. But guys, if you annex in properties, accept the responsibility and do the right thing by the investors. Because at the end of the day, we can stop the development if we want to. The KPI, as it stands, this now affords us the ability to either allow people to, to enter into it by expanding it or preventing it. We don't have to change things by creating moratoriums or all sorts of things. We have the tools here already where we can deal with development. We can manage development. And as I said earlier on, what really is apparent to me is the fact that we've known that the KPI was instigated back when in two thousand and five, and we're in two thousand and twenty-five. We've had twenty years to plan the infrastructure. If it wasn't planned, it doesn't start with this administration. It started with previous administrations. And what I'm going to say to you guys is unless you stop the development by preventing it going forward in annexation or starting, then we're never going to get ahead of the curve. But by managing it in an area where we're already putting in the infrastructure, that makes a lot of common sense to me. The last thing I want to do is see roads torn up and everything, when it's unnecessary. But if you guys already voted to annex this in, do your duty by this man.
Sebastian Hall, Rock Springs Road. Over the last three and a half years, this been a consistent and a common issue. So it's not fair to the developers when they come and they want to come to our city. But then it's not fair to the residents who's been here and they have to deal with the traffic issue. So we hear the pros and the cons. The thing, what action are we going to put in place to resolve the issue? It seem like we have the conversation and we willing to have the conversation, but we're not willing to get together and say, okay, what do we got to do? Cause clearly it's going to butt head. And you're going to have the long traffic lines when you're trying to go to school, take, drop your kids off school, you're trying to get to work. At some point, you know, when the developers say, quote unquote, it is what it is because, yeah, it is. And is it his fault? No. Is it the previous one before? No. They all looking at, hey, look, we're just trying to get in, get our, our project done. So at what point, at what point do we stop and say, okay, let's really sit down and take a look at this? So I ask everybody sitting here, let's develop a plan of action. You do a workshop for everything else. Let's sit down and let's have a real conversation with the developers and the planners. And say, how can we fix this where to be fair to everybody moving forward? Because everybody have to do their part in the solution moving forward if we all want to prosper. And so it's time to stop talking about it and let's go ahead and get some in writing, some on paper that we can look at and we can, uh, bring it to the table and vote on it and move forward in that good faith for everybody. Because we're here to serve the developer as well as we're here to serve the residents. So how can we be fair in impartial? So let's make it happen, please.
Anybody else?
I actually have a question for the engineer. So I received a few calls from the landings at Rock Springs in regards to, and I'm trying to pull it up now. A letter that was sent from the Community Development Department Engineering Division. Are you familiar with that letter in regards to the flooding and kind of what's going on in the area? Okay, do you know? Let's see if we can sit this letter out.
Good afternoon, Vladimir Smonovsky, City Engineer. I'm not familiar with the flooding issue there now. You said it was sent to the Community Development Commissioner, uh, Department, the email?
I think this is your signature as well. I think it was sent from actually you because you actually signed it. So the issue is, is that prior to the development, the improvement of that development, this particular homeowner, a few other homeowners was not required to have homeowners insurance. When that new development was approved and when the construction in the development started, I guess it started to push water or something happened. Now they're required to have flood insurance. So from my understanding, FEMA requires, and I'm just trying to, they really just sent this to me about an hour ago. Uh, FEMA also requires that the city engineer do a substantial improvement study to see how that would impact the residents that's currently in the area. Have we done that study prior to?
I'm not sure if the study was done. Are these the properties to the south or to the east of the?
Well, I'm just, I just received this an hour ago. But from my understanding, the homeowner is, and I'm trying to review it while I was actually up here.
Okay.
I guess the question is, have we done a study for this particular development that's asking to be approved right now? Has there been any type of substantial study to see what?
A study will not be done. They will typically come with a construction plans. They will pro- provide the drainage report. They will include all the routing and how they're going to treat the stormwater. So not necessarily they're going to do a study to assess what's happening with the surrounding properties. What is going to be important for them is to prove that no additional flow will go or run or will be taken to the surrounding properties.
So at this time, I know for me, until I'm able to really understand what that looks like according to this letter, it seems like there is some type of liability on the city to do some type of study. So I probably need to sit down with you to understand. So at this time, I don't feel comfortable approving any study, especially just receiving this letter from a resident saying that now, because of the development that we have approved, that now they're required to have flood insurance.
Commissioner Anderson, are you able to circulate that or send it to Mr. Williams?
I can.
Yeah, please. I tell you what, why don't we?
Yeah, I mean, that, they will have to be in the, in the flood plain in order to get the, get the flood insurance.
Let's do this. I mean, there's some concerns here. Why don't we, um, we, why don't we table this meeting to the next council meeting? And let's, let's address those issues.
Okay.
With, with staff, so, um, unless anybody else got a, a thought, just assume this, let's just, let's just table this until the, um, make it, um, date certain June eighteenth, seven o'clock. Okay, uh, with promotion to, looking for motion to continue ordinance number three thousand ninety-eight to the June eighteenth meeting.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Anderson.
So if we're not going to continue, what, what, what is the pleasure of the council? Do you just?
The motion fails.
It fails, okay.
All right, for lack of a second, motion fails. Okay, next up, ordinance number three thousand ninety-nine.
But we have to dispose of it somehow.
That's why the continuance is probably so we can research, I mean.
So either it's going to continue or we're going to have to pass it, one or the other.
I've already.
I thought that's what we were trying to do was get a continuance to the next meeting. That was the, the point, but. So then make, somebody need to make a motion then to deny it, and then we deny it. I mean, it's only.
Either continue or deny it.
Yeah.
Commissioner, you want to make a motion, you want to, what, what's your pleasure of, I guess you two, because you guys didn't vote on it, so.
Yeah, I would move to, uh, deny this project or this ordinance, thirty-eight eighty ninety-eight.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta to deny ordinance number three thousand ninety-eight.
So attorney, if no one, we, we're at a standstill here, what happens to this? Does the, does the project completely fall flat? What, what? Procedurally, how does this work?
So is it a situation right now where you're, you're talking about a situation where no motion is made and there's no?
Correct. You got a motion, but no second.
Right.
On either side.
So no, no successful motion at all. So it's, yeah, assume there's no motion.
Or to table.
Yeah, ultimately, if there's no, if, if no motion is made, it's, it's a failure on the, on the.
Right.
Now, of course, if, if the next meeting's a problem or so forth, it could be tabled indefinitely or tabled to a date not quite certain. Uh, just tabled for the future to be addressed and, you know, they're going to have the discourse that you need to have for, for the comfort, ultimately decide what you want to do in an affirmative motion in, in that time. So there are some options available if it's, if you don't feel that you'll be satisfied for the next meeting and want to take affirmative action on the, or affirmative motion on the, on the project tonight.
And I also think it's important that we also give people that come into the city a reason why. We need to have, be able to articulate to them just a fail, just a failed motion is just, to me, it's just not good, fat, sound business decisions. They need to know how to move forward, how to assist us. So I just think it's just common practice of just not explaining to what's next. They walk out, not know what's going on. I, you know, I don't think that's good for business.
Next after the future land use amendment?
I'm sorry?
Next after the future land use.
Well, I, well, I'm, I've already, I, I think it's more so on the pleasure of, okay, he's kind of.
We've got two motions, both of the fails. It's like, it's dead, right?
Yeah.
Andrew, I mean, there's.
But still, I think.
Unless another motion is made.
Right. And I don't, then look at, so I, motion, bro.
Yeah, just to clarify, Commissioner Anderson. Uh, the property is definitely outside of the flood plain. I just looked at the FEMA firm maps. Only there's some properties way on the east side there in zone A in a flood plain, so. None, none of the properties here in this area, like this property and the properties to the east and the properties to the south and the north are in the flood plain zone.
I would definitely still want to meet with you because that, that homeowner and a few other homeowners have received that and I'm just not it.
Okay.
I don't feel comfortable even making a decision.
Just wanted to clarify. I was just checking. Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so, so let's move to continue to June eighteen.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to one with Commissioner Nesta in opposition. Next up, ordinance number three thousand ninety-nine.
Ordinance number three thousand ninety-nine. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional to RSF one B Residential Single Family District Large Lot for certain real property generally located at twenty-five oh one Rock Springs Road, owned by BSC Rock Springs East LLC, comprising of nine point six three acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and ineffective data.
For the record, this is June's own planner at this community development. Um, this is the same property that applicant has re- rezoned to, um, from T Transitional to RSF one B. Surrounding property has a, a county A two for residential and office for educational. DRC has recommended approval and Planning Commission has anonymously recommended approval of rezoning to RSF one B. Um, the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three oh nine nine holding over for the second reading and adoption on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Any questions for June? Uh, I think I think we're all on the same page. Anybody need to speak on this? If not, I just think we'll, we'll just do a, look for a motion to, uh, continue this to the June eighteenth meeting as well.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to one with Commissioner Nesta in opposition. Okay, next up, ordinance number thirty-one oh three.
Ordinance, ordinance number thirty-one oh three. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the, of Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from county low density residential to city commercial for property owned by Nicholas D'Angelis and Stephanie D'Angelis, located at four thirty-eight North Park Avenue, comprising point six six acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and ineffective data.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Amir Hamza. I'm a planner. The applicant has submitted a small scale future land use amendment from county low dens- The applicant has submitted a small-scale future land use amendment from county low-density residential to uh co- city commercial. For property located on four thirty-eight North Park Avenue, which is just north of Burgess Street and south of uh East Summit Street. Is that a vicinity and aerial mass of the four thirty-eight North Park Avenue site? The total site area is zero point six six acres. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to be able to sell the property as a commercial property. Uh, the future land use currently as mentioned is um county low-density residential and is proposed to change to commercial. Which will have a floor area ratio of zero point two five and totals a maximum of seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven square feet. Of total buildable space. And the zoning is transitional currently and is proposed to change to community commercial. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval at the May thirteen twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission anonymously recommended. Approval of the future land use amendment. The recommended motion is to accept first reading of ordinance number three thousand one hundred and three. And hold it over for second reading and adoption on June eighteen twenty twenty-five.
Any questions for Amir?
We discussed this, well, you weren't in my meeting, but I, it was discussed that uh what's the goals of this project or this this site?
Currently, what what I, when I asked the applicant this question, it was basically just to keep it, have a commercial zoning and future land use. So when they sell the property, it 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 could sell as a commercial property instead of a residential property. Cause it's all, it's uh, it faces a Rock Springs Road, so it's like a commercial corridor.
Okay, and then we, this was just recently annexed in, correct?
Correct, correct. It was annexed in.
Okay. And I understand the commercial corridor, so they don't have any intentions themselves of developing this in any capacity. It's to. Entitle and then sell.
Correct.
And have somebody else come in?
Yeah.
Okay, understood. What, can you give me some uh general? Goals of that site? Like, as a city, what do we see that site becoming?
Uh, small retail, maybe like uh uh, I know that commu- community commercial allows retail restaurants, you know, that type of business. Small retail. Cause again, the build, maximum buildable area is seven, around seven thousand square feet, so it's nothing big.
Sure.
Yeah.
And how many stories high can that go?
Up to three stories.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I know we have the the Foster's Corner Development, little further north of that, it's two-story.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Amir? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not with close of public hearing, look for motion to approve. Annexation ordinance number thirty-one oh three at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
This isn't.
This is, this is a small-scale feature.
Small-scale future. Can I make a motion to approve uh ordinance number thirty-one oh three at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up ordinance number thirty-one oh four.
Ordinance number thirty-one oh four. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida. Changing the zoning from T transitional to CC's community commercial for property located at four thirty-eight North Park Avenue. Owned by Nicholas D'Angelo's and Stephanie D'Angelo's, comprising point six six acres more or less. Providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Again, this is Amir Hamza. I'm a planner. Um, this is for the same property as before. The applicant is requesting a rezoning uh of uh. From transitional to community commercial for property located on four thirty-eight North Park Avenue. At which is again, north of Burgess Street and south of East Summit Street. You're the same vicinity and aerial mass of the four thirty-eight North Park Avenue site. The air is total site area is again, zero point six six acres. And for the same reason, the applicant is requesting the rezoning to be able to sell the property as a commercial property. So as mentioned before, the future land uses county no density residential currently and propose to change to commercial. Zoning is transitional and is proposed to change to community commercial to match with the proposed um um future land use. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval at the May thirteen twenty twenty-five meeting. The Planning Commission anonymously recommended approval of the change of zoning. The recommended motion is to accept first reading of ordinance number three thousand one hundred and four and hold it over for second reading and adoption on June eighteen twenty twenty-five.
Any questions for Amir?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, the current homeowners don't have a contingent contract right now pending on. This changing the zoning?
No, no. Not that, from what I asked them uh the other day, no.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, uh look for a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one oh four at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second, second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, uh ordinance number thirty-one oh seven?
Ordinance number thirty-one oh seven. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida. To extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four. The hereafter described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida. Owned by six PM S one REO LLC, HMF LLC. Charles P Stallings, Kim L Stallings, Yul E Stallings Junior, and Crystal Denise Stallings. Located on the northwest corner of Ondike Road, Ondice Road and State Road four fifty-three. State food, State Road four twenty-nine, comprising one hundred and ninety-six point eight three acres more or less. Providing for directions to the city clerk, severability conflicts and an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Um, the applicant has requested that this item be continued to a date certain of June eighteenth. Twenty twenty-five at seven PM.
But let's go ahead and, uh, anybody here for this amendment? Okay, alright, if if nobody needs to speak on this, yeah, okay, so uh look for motion from council to continue. Cause we're gonna continue to June eighteenth. You want to talk about it today? Okay. Well, then Gene, you probably need to go ahead and give the presentation.
I just, I just have one, one, one statement. It it just at the bottom, Leroy Bell Mart Hella, is at the bottom of this. I just spoke about the last, the density. The density is said that it will be determined at a later date. But then again, that put in the cart the head of the horse. I I I feel that if if you're coming in here. Asking the city, asking this commission to approve something, you shouldn't come in here half cop. You should come in here with all your i's dotted and t's crossed. You should have everything, every report, just the last, the last go around. I guess the commissioner had something about a flood, this, that, another, but if a developer come in. Have everything together. Instead of doing it in pieces. You approve this today and you get right down to the end of it, then what is the density? What is gonna be? It gonna be something different. Everything need to be above board and upfront. That's all I ask.
Aubrey Kim eight three six oh three Golden Gem Road. In terms of a point of view on this, I have no point of view on the actual annexation. The problem that I have is that we continue to annex properties into the city. And if we do that, we have responsibility to make sure that when that property is annexed, that we hold up. To the land development that they're allowed. Our last resident, we have him coming back. Uh, we annexed properties in. Let's be sure that we know when we annexed properties in. That we give them the right to build. If we then take away some of the, the reasons for them to build. This city opens themselves up to lawsuits. And when you're speaking about hundred and ninety acres, these are people with serious money who can fight the city. So if you're gonna annex things, make sure that you're gonna follow through. And 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 allow them to do the building that they're entitled to do.
Anybody else want to speak on this one? Not uh, close the public hearing, look for motion to continue ordinance number thirty-one oh seven. Uh, to the June eighteenth commission meeting. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one oh nine.
Ordinance number thirty-one oh nine. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida. To extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four. The hereafter described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida. Owned by MG eight eight Central, Center Florida Cold Storage, the second LLC. Located south of West Orange Blossom Trail between Albrecht Avenue and Stewart Avenue. Comprising point forty acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability conflicts and an effective date.
This is Amir Hamza. I'm a planner. The applicant has submitted a annexation application for properties located on two four two four. And two four two eight West Orange Blossom Trail, which is just west of Albirch Street, I say Albirch Avenue and east of Stewart Avenue. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the two four two four and two four two eight West Orange Blossom Trail sites. The total combined site area for both sites is uh zero point three eight acres. This, there, there's a residential property on one of the sites and a commercial property on the other site. And uh, these are the uh future land use and zoning maps that show the zoning and future land use of the surrounding properties. That are inside the city limits. The adjacent properties that are, that make this annexation possible has a zoning of. A uh I dash L light industrial. The adjacent properties also have a future land use of industrial. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval. The recommended motion is to accept first reading of ordinance, uh number uh. Three one zero nine and hold it over for second reading and adoption on June eighteenth twenty twenty-five.
Any questions for Amir?
This is the owner that surrounds this parcel that's either owns it already or is annexing it in, correct?
Correct, correct. So you wanna combine it all.
Okay, into one new project.
Correct.
And then, this parcel at one point, I guess in its current state, is a um, uh, an enclave, correct? Inex, it's a, it currently an.
Currently is an enclave, although if they annex it in, they're decreasing the enclave, which is allowed.
Correct, so this kinda cleans that up and and. And then they're expanding.
Yeah, they're pretty much gonna have the same for future land use and uh zoning as or the surrounding property, just light industrial zoning. And industrial future land use. That's the plan.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Hang on.
Okay. Any other questions for Amir? Any question, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one oh nine at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Bradley, you wanna hand those? Bradley, if you wanna hand those out, just so we got a minute or two. Um, just, this is not. My normal way of bringing forward a business item, but um. Been playing phone tag and email tag with the folks at uh Lumen Technologies about a uh. An agreement with them so we could put pump station at Porter Lake on their property to help with the flooding. Finally got the agreement back an hour ago. And so I've, uh, Andrew is feverishly looking at the agreement, make sure he's okay with it. Uh, that'll be the last, we'll make it the last agenda item, uh, just so we, we wanna get, we wanna start pumping the lakes. Uh, this is the final piece of the puzzle, so uh apologize for bringing it forward in the middle of a meeting. But it's um, I thought it's imperative that we bring it forward rather than wait two more weeks. So anyway, you. We'll, we'll bring it up as a, as a number uh, number nine, but just wanted y'all to have that for the next couple of minutes. Thank you. Okay, Blanche, I'm sorry.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. A resolution of the city of Apopka, Florida. Authorizing issuance of the city of Apopka, Florida Special Assessment Revenue Note, series twenty twenty-five. Emerson Park Assessment Area. In a principal amount not to exceed two million eight hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars. For the purpose of financing, refinancing and or reimbursing the cost of capital improvements for roads and sidewalks. Located in the Emerson Park neighborhood, providing that such note shall be a limited obligation of the city. Payable solely from certain non-adverbal special assessments as described herein. Providing for rights, securities and remedies for the owner of such note. Making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, ratifying establishment of intent to reimburse. Such improvements incurred with proceeds of such note and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Susan. Blanche Sherman, Finance Director, Mayor Commissioners. Um, as just read by Susan, the request before you is adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. Authorizing the issuance of the city of Apopka Special Assessment Revenue Note, series twenty twenty-five Emerson Park Assessment Area. The note will be secured by the special assessment levied on Emerson Park Assessment Area. As the proceeds of the note will be used to finance the improvements within Emerson Park Assessment Area. I have Misty Taylor, our bond counsel, and Joel Tindell, our finance advisor here. To address any questions or comments that you may have.
Any questions for Blanche?
Just a quick clarifying, just for anybody that's watching, just, so this is the, and it's not even a, a technical, this is a. As a city, we're promising that we're gonna pay these funds on behalf of Emerson Park, but Emerson Park is paying us.
Emerson Park will be under a special assessment.
Right.
And that will go through the county.
Right.
And the funds will come to us.
Correct. We're fronting it.
Say that.
Aren't we fronting some of these funds?
No.
No. So we're not starting any construction till funds are here?
No, those proceeds, once we close on this account, they will be deposited into an escrow account.
And this is just the resolution? To confirm that note?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public wish to speak? If not, look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida. Amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October one twenty twenty-four and ending September thirtieth twenty twenty-five, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one is related to the item you just approved. In the amount of two million four forty-nine nine sixty-one, that includes the proceeds that we'll get from the loan. In the amount of two million two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, the funds that we received already from Emerson Park subdivision. Which is for the improvements, excluding the alleyway, that comes to about two hundred and ten thousand. Dollars, but in total, they gave us seven hundred and forty-six thousand, just so you know. And the estimated cost of the improvements of about two point two million. Those charges would have already incurred with bond counsel and everything else, that's that one fifty. And then closing costs on the loan is about sixty-four thousand dollars. So the total amount of this budget amendment to incorporate it in the budget so they can proceed with their improvement is two million four forty-nine nine sixty-one.
Any questions for Blanche?
Let's just go a little bit slower. I understand what it is, just again, for those that are watching to kinda understand the process we're going through here. So. On the line items, it says contributions and donations and then contributions. So contributions and donations. Is specifically from Emerson Park. That is their.
Yes.
Side excluding the alleyways.
Correct.
So, why, I guess my question is, why is it in two different lines?
I did two different amounts because they were representing two different things. Um, you know, that's why I did it. Like the sixty-four thousand four twenty-five. Just only because they were representing two different amounts. Yeah, they paid that one forty-six uh five thirty-six. Um, for uh additional portion that they have with um some, the clinic that is in that area. That was over and above that original six hundred thousand.
Okay.
And the sixty-four four twenty-five, if you can go back and remember how we broke up the six hundred thousand. Five hundred and something was for the alleyways and the remainder was that sixty-four four twenty-five.
Okay, so any, those contributions and donations are exclusively from Emerson Park?
Yes, and we have those funds.
Okay, and that, and that's where the, the credits are coming in from. So the, the two million two hundred thirty-nine thousand is from the loan.
Yes.
And then the one forty-six five thirty-six is from Emerson Park and then the sixty-four thousand four hundred twenty-five is also from Emerson.
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not close the public hearing, look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. Got a motion by Commissioner Net- Anderson. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Alright, next up, Lumen. Andrew, you're on the.
Can we take like a ten-minute break for us to actually read this first? Go to the restroom and, cause there may be questions on this. Can we take a quick ten-minute break? Can we take like a ten minute break for us to actually read this first, go to the restroom and, cause there may be questions on this, can we take a quick ten minute break?
Sure.
I don't know why you're laughing, it's a, it's an agreement.
Okay, are we everybody ready to go, let's knock this out, okay. Next up, we're gonna talk about the Lumen Agreement, which is the agreement for. Us to be able to put a pump station on their property to build pump excess water out of Border Lake and into, I think it's Blue Lake. Is that right? Glad, is it Blue Lake? What's it, I mean. Isn't it Blue Lake's the next one?
Lake, Lake Jackson. And then goes to Lake Pittman and over to Lake Page eventually.
Right, I know that, but what's the first lake it goes?
Uh, Lake Jackson, I think is the first. To the south, yes.
Thank, thank you, glad. Okay, Andrew, I hate to put you on the spot, but you, you're in the, you're in the hot seat now.
No problem, Mayor, and I'd be happy if it's the, the council's pleasure just to walk through some of the changes and just go over them so that you all understand exactly what's going on here. Um, first of all, this is a temporary access and construction easement agreement, so it would only be in existence while the, the temporary project is going on. And, and there's some dates in here that I'll, I'll, I'll go through as well, but this is a very simple agreement, shouldn't be anything complex. Um, what you see in the first paragraph is just some nomenclature addition of a citation to effective date, nothing is substantively changing there. Um, we go through the whereas clauses, those are identical, we then get to the now there for statement. And the consideration, which is the amount paid by the city uh to have the actual easement, has been changed from ten dollars to five hundred dollars. Typically, that's just nominal consideration, it's not an amount that's actually exchanged, it's just recited for terms of contract. So it's not clear to me whether they actually want five hundred dollars or whether or not that's, that's, but as, as long as the city's okay with that amount, no, no problem there. Um, are we, I mean, do we, we would need to write that check then? Is that the kind of understanding of the fact that they're not doing a more nominal one dollar, ten dollars, are, is their expectation we're gonna cut a five hundred dollar check? I haven't had any conversations with them, so potentially, but um. Couldn't say for, for certain, that typically is just a uh. Consideration recitation.
That's what's, i- it's strange. Uh, not average that they would change that dollar amount, right?
Uh, well, it is a Colorado, I believe Lumen Technologies is based in, in Colorado, so it. At least the address is in Colorado, uh, for Florida, normally it's a ten or fifteen dollar recitation, yes. Um, but five hundred dollars may not be unusual someplace else.
Okay.
Um, as far as the uh grant, um, there's just some language that's been inserted, commenced in the effective date, that is, uh, doesn't change substantively. Uh, the easement termination would be either the earlier of the date of completion of the project, that is the same, or three hundred and sixty five days. So this, uh, the modifications just give the city a, a hard deadline of getting everything done by three hundred and sixty five days. With these changes. Onto the next page. Really no substantive changes in three, it's just stating that any. Any uh restoration, once the construction is complete, would be to the grantor's reasonable satisfaction, that's, that's very typical. Um, going into some of these new paragraphs here, we have condition of the easement area, I've spoken to uh your city engineer. Uh, the city is reasonably assured that the condition of the easement area is acceptable at this time, and so that's not a, an issue. Uh, the next uh paragraph indemnification, uh, there's just some language that I would like to insert to limit the indemnification somewhat. And that can simply be dealt with in, upon your approval, just allowing some flexibility for the city attorney to discuss. With their attorney, some limitations to indemnification that would be acceptable. But uh, essentially, we would just wanna make sure that uh sovereign immunity is preserved and specifically cited and applies both to contract and tort. And I have some language, uh, already some, some previously seen language that I would like to insert in there, as well as eliminate the um requirement that the s- the city defend. Uh, the grantor in the case of a lawsuit. Um, the no representations uh paragraph is, is not problematic. Um, that's just simply stating that uh grantees not making any guarantees, uh, or providing any representation, representations warranties related to the property. And what's currently in existence there, and then un- under damage, it's just a uh, a further recitation that, hey, if there's a problem. And the city does damage to the property, that they're gonna, you know, the city will fix it. Um, as far as other additions, exhibit A has been added. And uh, that's just something I think that, that could be a little bit clearer, and that's, that's something that um. Staff or uh, our office can work with the uh, the grantors on and, and just getting that a little bit more specific. So the city can be reasonably assured of exactly where the easement area grant is. And that's, that's it, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Andrew?
I may, give me just a couple more minutes to, to run through this. So, so after section four, those are all provisions that the. Grantor added in, Lumen added in.
Correct.
The blue, okay, yes, so that's, you're seeing all of this for the, you personally are seeing all this for the first time right now.
Yes.
These changes, okay.
That's correct.
Mister Williams, have you seen this agreement already? Were you privy to this prior to today?
Uh, no, this has been.
Eight minutes an hour ago, that's what I said, I told you it's an hour ago, I got this.
Mayor, are you yelling at me right now?
I'm just telling you exactly what happened.
Slam down your hand, we're talking about decorum, I'm asking a very simple, calm question about an agreement. And you're berating me for asking a question.
I'm just telling you when we got it, an hour ago.
I wasn't asking you the question though either, you don't need to slam things down when I'm asking a simple question. So, Mister Williams.
No, this came in about an hour ago, uh, I have not seen this agreement, other than just right now. And I believe, I mean, this has been a project that's been in the works for, for quite some time now, uh, and I believe it started before I was in the interim role.
You've never seen any form of this agreement?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mister.
I, I don't have any questions, I think it's very common.
Okay, anybody from public which should speak on this?
If we had a receipt, Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs, if we had received this in a proper time, is this something that would have been in the packet for us to review?
No.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Listen, we, if, if the council, it's their pleasure, we can just, we can put it off to two weeks, I am perfectly fine with that.
From understanding, I think we were actually waiting on the agreement, that, I mean, this is something that is, I think is very essential and that we need to move forward with, I don't see anything. I mean, attorneys, there anything in this agreement that you see that's egregious or haven't seen before?
Very standard boilerplate language and, and the, the requests that I would make to the changes, the indemnification language are. The same typical requests I make for just about every agreement that comes in from another party.
What, I think what I'd like to, to, to recommend or like the council to, to offer is a, just to, to. Give uh council the authority to, to negotiate with um Lumen, let's try to get this done so that we don't have to come back in two weeks. If he can get this thing knocked out this week, then we could start pumping next week, so I'm, my, my goal is to try to get this. Reason I brought it forward, even though we only got an hour ago, is so that we can approve it, some, some approval, and I asked. I asked Andrew Hannah, I said, can we, can you get there, and he said, well, Mayor, there's things I would like to change, I said. What if you, what if we give you the authority to uh, to negotiate the agreement, uh, let's get this agreement done so that we can. Begin pumping, you know, hopefully next week, so. The most I'd li- I'd like to, to, to offer, have somebody offer up is, you know, to give uh, the, the law firm of, of Shepherd and. Uh, the ability to negotiate with Lumen and uh, to sign on our behalf an agreement um. For, with the Lumen uh companies to uh give us the authority to put the pump station on a temporary basis on their property.
So, but Mister Sylvester just asked. Would this be in an agenda item or be in the packet, you said no, so why do we need to approve it now?
It, it would be an agenda item.
You just told him, no, it wouldn't be.
It wasn't agenda item because we didn't have it, no.
That's not what he asked.
Well, then I misunderstood, it, yes, it would have been an agenda item, absolutely, but it wa- wasn't because I didn't have it.
That wasn't the question.
So I guess the question is, do we allow, with hurricane season approaching, is this? Is, I'm, what is it that, I mean, I, I don't know what is it that we're, like, maybe I'm missing something here.
I just need, I wanna have city council's approval to let. The law firm uh negotiate with Lumen to sign the agreement for, on our behalf.
Where are we at with? Orange County permits, things of that nature?
Ready to go, that's all we're waiting on.
So those are approved? We have copies of those permits?
They're not, they're not approved because we haven't got this agreement. We have to have all the property owners that we're gonna be touching have to have their approval, we got all the. The single family homeowners uh have agreed, we got all written um agreements from those folks, we just had, Lumen's the last.
Wouldn't we need a similar agreement with the homeowners that we're signing or that this is?
They had a much simpler agreement.
So what makes it different between having to approve this one versus having to approve the homeowner one, it's still property rights?
Right.
So why, why wouldn't we have to approve those ones as well?
You just got, this is, this is a legal agreement, that was just an agreement.
I haven't seen those, but what I can tell you is this is uh solely an agreement just for temporary access and. I haven't seen those, but what I can tell you is this is a solely an agreement just for temporary access and. Access property to construct the the facilities on the site. So this just gives the city essentially a license, it's an easement, but you know, the ability.
I understand. And for. Yeah, so I I definitely understand that, but I would think that if we're gonna do it for this property, we would need it for all of our residential properties we're gonna be going on as well.
We got them to sign their agreement, but.
It depends on on the location of wherever the city would be going, if the city may already have uh, not necessarily right of way, but may already have easement access.
Well, the mayor's saying that we already have agreements in place, but we didn't approve those agreements.
But that's just, that's from the homeowners, yeah, we got homeowner agreements, they they signed it, they they could, I mean, it was a, not even a one-page agreement. This was a.
What? Eight page? Yeah, but it's doing the same thing, I guess, I I don't, the inconsistencies is what concerns me.
Then you give mayor authority to do it, I, whatever you want, I I just.
But either you need our authority to do this. Or you don't, I guess attorney, do we have to?
It's an acceptance, so in other words, it's it's almost, it's it's basically like a deed, it's part of a, you know, in in property, that bundle of sticks that comes with a property right.
Understand.
So in essence, you know, just like a deed, and and this is couched as an easement agreement, because the city is agreeing to indemnify and do other things, that's why you have the city execute. But ultimately, if the city's not providing indemnification, the city's not offering, you know, other other elements that require a transaction. Just like a deed, uh, where the receiving party, the grantee does not execute. You can certainly have an easement where the the grantee does not execute the agreement. In this case, the city is providing indemnification, doing some other things back, and so there is a uh, there is a a line for the city's signature. Acceptance on the actual document itself.
But you haven't seen, do you know if your office wrote the other ones for the residential properties?
They did not.
Who wrote that then?
I'm not sure if it was Saint John's had one, or was it, were we just? I I'm not, I can't even, can't, I don't recall, I don't. I don't know. But just, it was just a. Three liner agree. There's nothing about insurance, there's nothing about indemnifications, none of that's in the the homeowner agreements.
Did, is there a counter signing of that, not just the, did the city sign those agreements as well?
Yes.
So we have inconsistencies here to where the city council didn't approve those ones, not saying we would or wouldn't, I don't, I'm not sure if we have, do we need to approve? Or is this just a more of an administrative issue that? The mayor's office can handle. As he has with the residential properties?
I- in this case, it should come before council, because there's an indemnification provision, this agreement requires the city to indemnify the grantor. And so that's a council decision, because that incurs potential liability on the city's behalf, you know, uh, with the other agreements, and and I haven't seen those, but. Is this original agreement did not include indemnification provision, there's still other reasons you may have in an actual agreement. But uh, if those are just simple, it it's it's more like a license, you know, to access the property, it may in fact be that case, it may just be an easement, uh. If the city doesn't have to give anything back per se, then. There may not be a need for execution on those other agreements.
And and. I ju- again, the inconsistencies here, and with this kind of being rushed, and again, we do need to rush, because this has been delayed for so long, and hurricane season is here. I understand the need to knock this out, but at the same time, we're being inconsistent, and then does it open us up to other issues down the road? And is it being done properly? I think that's the thing, is that we tend to rush things and then have to come back and. Fix them then, and it costs much, much more to do it the second time than the first time correctly, if we just waited a little bit. So. With the permit that, how how many different permits are we applying for?
Just, just one, I mean, well, the permits would. Permit, it's just one permit.
And that's, but Orange County is applying for that?
Yes.
Does the permit, the permit does, I'm just asking, the permit requires for this easement agreement?
Yes. Yeah, we, and, because we went and got, we got the 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 resident of the residential properties, they all signed it, we had, we were ready to go, waiting on Lumen. Well, then come to find out, we had to have the, not only the. The prop, not the um. Who was residing there, but also the property owner, so now we had to go back, there was, I think, two of them, we had to go back and go to find the. The property owner, get their signature as well as the their tenant. So we finally got the, well, they've been done, oof, three weeks ago, maybe, four weeks ago, and so. I've been working on this Lumen thing since then, I mean, it's 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 been a a journey, let's just put it that way.
So Commissioner, what is it that you're, what's your pleasure, are you wanting us to table this, what is it that you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, they're, similar to, and you and I both have done this many times, we're like, don't rush us, let us just kinda. Let's review it, let's understand what it is, and at the end of the day too, the attorney's gonna make some additional adjustments as well to to his comfort level, and will the. Landowner approve those, deny those, come back with something else and say, if we do this, then if we go to that, I want this now too. The five hundred dollars is a weird thing, again, we don't have like a true answer on that, I think that's just strange, and if we need to issue that check, that needs to be timely and. To make sure that we have no other delays, so I just wanna make sure we understand what we're getting into here. And then there's a lack of consistency between the homeowners that have signed agreements that none of us have seen, and then this agreement that we're seeing at the last second. So. I just wanna make sure that we understand a comprehensive approach to what this plan is, who's signing what? And what is being signed by a residence, because if a resident calls me and says, hey, I don't like what I signed, I'm gonna say, I have no idea what you're talking about.
So so my question is, so, because we need to make sure that we're moving forward to get this permanent, because it's rainy season, is that? Would, do we have a copy of that, so the attorney can look at, and he can look at this, and he gives his professional opinion? Yeah, I mean, because I, because if not, we gotta wait like two weeks, it is rainy season and they'll. I'm just, that's just my concern, making sure that we're able to.
I agree, times are the essence, absolutely, no, and and by no means I wanna make this worse, but if the permit's ready and we're just waiting on this, then I mean. Truly, we can have a special meeting. Friday, next week sometime, I mean, there's stuff we can do that, yes, it's out of the ordinary, but we can do it to make sure for circumstances like this, that we have all the documents. We can see what the residents have signed, who who on staff has signed those or has those uh copies of those agreements?
Yeah, it's probably Dog, Doc Dog's gone.
And then who countersigned on our side those agreements?
Not sure there was even a countersign, I think it was just, just uh, just the homeowner. The property owner and whoever lived in the property.
There's a lot of, just maybes, or again, we don't know what we're agreeing to. And it's totality, I don't wanna, we're seeing this in segments right now, and I wanna see the totality of all the agreements, basically. We agree to all of these easements, which is effectively what we're doing as a city, to all these properties, so. That's my concern, i- it's just, I wanna make sure I see everything and that we're all good and that it's, again, that when a resident calls us, they. We can speak knowledgeable and say, this is wired, this is what it is.
I spoke with every resident.
I haven't seen any of those, and just like you, I represent those same residents, so. I wanna make sure that when they call me, I can too be ready to answer to them. Because it's my job. So I'm I'm all for this, again, this isn't even close to the final version of what we're gonna get to. And if we need to approve, if I'm gonna approve any contract, again, we've both done this, I wanna see the final version.
If it's helpful to council, what I can do is I can walk through just the the changes that I would ask for, which are limited to the indemnification section.
So a- and I appreciate that, but they're not final, because the the landowner could come back and say, we don't wanna do, no. They could just say no, they absolutely have the right, because we don't have any negotiating power with them at this point, they know we need them, so they could just say no.
So if they say no to the changes, then that's when he bring it back, is what I'm assuming, I just think we need to be efficient and and.
I totally agree, and again, I'm happy to. To ha- if we wanna set a special meeting.
Kids have a special meeting if we don't.
I don't know.
How quickly, I mean.
I don't know. Don't know. That's really, I'd just like to give our our city attorney the authority to 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 negotiate, to complete the.
So.
That's what they do, they negotiate contracts.
If the attorney is saying that he will only change one section, is that accurate, attorney?
What I would recommend, uh, yeah, some minor changes to the indemnification section, and perhaps just a uh, a little more detail on the exhibit A. Which which shows the easement area.
And then can we get clarification on the five hundred dollars and expectations there? On on. The pre-section effectively. I get, I ju- it's just a strange, that's a strange thing.
I just think that a lot of times with, as you know with contracts, some people want ten thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, it's the pleasure of the the commit, it could be kind of what.
Agreed, well, that's my point, is then then I need, uh, Mister Sherman, if that's, if we are cutting a check, which normally we're, this wouldn't require a check being cut, if we are. Then that process has to start, and they need to be set up in our portal and all those things, so.
How much time would you need to, if we had to um, cut a check for five hundred dollars, do we, is it in the budget, do we have time for it, what's the?
Land Sherman Finance Director, the funds are already incorporated in our budget, we can do it in a day.
Okay.
But. The five hundred dollars.
Long as I get that vendor set up, we can cut a check.
Right, so it's, we gotta, it's not the cost of this project, it's, although it'd come out of those funds, that's not my issue, it's. Again, who would we send that to, or a- and then in what capacity?
In the agreement.
It would be to the grantor. So it wouldn't be no, no escrow company or anything of that nature? I wouldn't anticipate that for five hundred dollars, no, I I agree with you, but they changed it to five hundred for a reason, there's a reason they changed it, and again, just clarity, to your point, it may just say, hey. Colorado, normally, this is what we do, okay, cool, got it, no problem, no, no, no stress, I just. Again, we're signing a contract, and I just like clarity on that, again, so I can properly speak to the residents on what we've agreed to.
I'm a hundred percent sure those residents that came in here, that was upset by flooding in their house, they'll probably put together five hundred dollars themselves. I just do not think with hurricane season coming up, I do not think it is wise for us to wait another day to execute this agreement, so that we can get these.
Well, you're twisting my words a little bit there, I never said it was the, the five hundred dollars is not the issue.
Well.
It's, are they expecting payment of that five hundred dollars, the ten dollars that we had in there is a normal customary thing in Florida, no money exchanges hands ever for that.
But I think we can just agree if they need the five hundred dollar payment, that we will disperse the five hundred dollar payment, I don't think this is like rockets, I I don't know.
It's not, but but you don't know if they are or not.
If we could, if they want payment, we can agree that we will provide the five hundred dollars.
Yes.
I mean.
We have to do it on a credit card.
Are we not in agreeance with the five hundred dollars?
We are, again, I'm, we don't know what their expectation is, so we're signing a contract and agreeing to things that we have no idea what the expectations from the uh uh opposite party is or wants. That's all I'm saying. Similar to when we've had uh uh employment contracts come in, we've wanted to check those first, just to confirm that we know what we're approving. Yes, it's similar to X or Y, but let's just make sure we know what we're doing. But again, I don't wanna delay it either, but at the same time, I wanna make sure we're doing what's right, and that nothing comes back to to bite us, and again, these agreements that the residents have signed. Attorney didn't prepare those, hasn't reviewed them, uh, we don't even know what these agreements are, do they open us up to liability, I'd love for our attorney to review these to see.
They've already signed them, so.
Yeah, we still didn't know, did that, does this still open up, just because they signed it doesn't mean.
But it doesn't stop us from signing this agreement.
No, but I'd like to be consistent.
Well, we've already, so we're not gonna, we've already, Nick, I just.
I just, I just, I just like a motion, I I don't, either way, I'm I'm perfectly fine, if you wanna make a motion to give uh our council the ability to negotiate. Uh, the contract with uh Lumen to to be able to use their property for a pump station to reduce the levels of borderline, looking for a motion.
Susan, uh, can you please get me all the uh resident letters that were signed? Thank you so much for that, I think that's helpful in understanding what's happening behind the scenes here.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
I said aye.
Okay, motion carries now.
Council, then what I will do, I will uh. Submit those those edits, those are, those to the indemnification section to. To Lumen, Century Link of Florida Inc., and uh, once that is agreed upon, present that for signature to the city.
Thank, thank you, anything else from your your office, far as attorney's report?
No, sir, nothing else to report.
Okay, all right. All right, Commissioner Anderson, anything?
Oh, just uh, Transform Outreach uh is having their, what, blow it up now, sorry. Juneteenth, Saturday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, the parade starts at two P M. at the Apopka V F W. And that's five one nine South Central Avenue, and.
That's not correct.
That's not correct, that's not correct.
Remember, it was because they're, they're being utilized, yeah, we're moving it to.
So I didn't get that, it's the best thing, I just got this yesterday, when did they change it?
Move to New Hope.
We approved it, they asked the council to meet.
Oh, well, they're sending out.
Thanks. But it's wrong.
Well, the organization just sent this to me, asked me to read it. They need to send it out, because that's what the organization's sending out.
You can read the rest of it, but the starting location is incorrect.
Okay, what's the starting location?
New Hope, Mississauga, about the church, pad twenty-seven, South Central Avenue.
Okay, and they're gonna update it, right, Commissioner? That's it.
Thank you, Mister Smith?
Uh, I have nothing, mayor.
Mister Nelson?
Absolutely, no, I have a quick presentation I wanna do, and and hopefully have some discussion for it, and then I got some other items I wanna review, so I'll go to the uh, the lecturing real quick. Perfect, thank you, so obviously, we've we've had a lot of discussions, especially today, in reference to the unhoused. And reference to having a resource center, I know a lot of residents have asked for, a lot of business owners have asked for it. And it's a need that we've had for years, well before I got elected, it's um, uh, to what Matthews Hope, Mister Blue had said, is that. This isn't gonna go away overnight, but at the same time, we can ease the pain a little bit, we can make it better, not only for. Those that are unhoused, but also our residents and our business owners, so. We have a lot of assets within the city that we already own, that we do not need to expend more money on, that we already own in-house. And there's no reason why we can't be using our city-owned property, so. The one that I saw and found that I think is is the perfect opportunity for us for many reasons that we'll go over, is twenty-one North Highland Avenue. It's a, again, city-owned parcel, it's a part of the dog park, um, borders the cemetery as well, uh, this portion I'm specifically speaking about. Is about five acres, it's partially fenced already, it's cleared, it's high and dry, meaning it's not in a flood zone or anything of that nature. The topography itself lends itself to providing privacy, uh, which I think is very big, because everyone always wants to help people. And they always just wanna say, well, I don't want in my backyard, so what this does is it helps naturally to create a privacy. Not only for uh the unhoused, but also for the residents that are enjoying parks next door. It has direct access, and I'll show a map here that we can more specifically discuss it as well. Direct access on the north side of the site to uh the West Orange Trail, which we know has been a, an issue uh for years of of the unhoused. Uh, walking and and in using, which they absolutely can do, it's just, we've got complaints, and I think this gives great and easy access for them to quickly and easily use. The building itself is a two-story building, it was previously a residence, has approximately twenty-eight hundred square feet uh of air-conditioned space, and. Between three different buildings, about five thousand square feet under roof. Uh, there's three bathrooms in the main building itself, the main building also has a three-car garage that we could convert into additional. Office space and things of that nature, meeting space for resources and whatever may be uh needed for that, it also has two storage outbuildings, uh. One is forty by thirty, and the other one is thirty-four by eighteen, again, on the same site, so we're not having to rebuild these. They do need work at the end of the day, so that is something we will have to budget for, but at the same time, it's already there, we don't have to try to go under contract on anything, we don't have to try to. Due diligence, we already own it, we've owned it for years and years. Some rough budgets, these are very, very rough estimates. For the just exterior renovations, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand, siding thirty-five thousand, roof is thirty thousand, windows are thirty thousand, any ADA upgrades that we need. Again, the the topography of the site itself lends itself to actually being a pretty accessible property, which is good. And it will save us on on ADA upgrades and things of that nature, and then additional fencing, again, not only to um. Protect the residents, but protect the, excuse me, the unhoused that'll be using that, it just blocks off um the building and things of that nature, so one fifty for the exterior. For the interior renovations, for any code-related items to be used in this nature, as a resource center, we're looking about seventy-five thousand for any office build-out, and this is more of like a vanilla shell. We're not building this out for uh. End user, they're gonna need to come in and do some of their own specific renovations, depending if it's gonna be a a medical office space or. Some uh just general offices in general, uh, electrical, plumbing, H B A C, uh, again, rough estimates there, and and so I'm seeing anterior subtotal of two hundred and five thousand. So that total there is about three hundred and fifty-five thousand, build in a contingency of fifteen percent, so it's fifty-three thousand, so looking at. Roughly total renovations of four hundred and eight thousand, again, these are rough estimates, this is just back of the napkin numbers. What what I'm proposing is a long-term lease, ten plus years, to, between the city of Apopka and Matthews Hope. Matthews Hope is obviously the gold standard in what they do, and it would only make sense to be able to bring them in and partner with them properly. To not only use their knowledge and resources, but to use our building and facilities to really create some efficiencies, and again, it checks off so many boxes that we're able to help the residents. The uh owners of businesses in the the downtown corridor, as well as the unhoused, it really checks off a lot of boxes, so. Operations and management day-to-day will be handled by Matthews Hope, and. And, uh, the funding will come from the City of Apopka General Fund Reserves, which again is why we kind of have that there, is to be able to. Renovate properties that we need or for emergencies. It's for opportunities that we can do to help our city long-term. So. That's what this really does. Here's an aerial shot of it. Again, the main building right in the center of the lot, the topop- topography starts on. Top left here, so west and it rolls down to the east. So from the dog park, really, you don't see much of that property, which is great. And what I love about this too. Is that it creates an opportunity for those buses that we were presented earlier today to be able to park out there pretty consistently. And not be an eyesore in any capacity, because maybe some businesses don't want to see a, a, a big bus. Uh, next door to them, or maybe there's residences in the area that don't want to see that. And this would provide that opportunity to, again, naturally. With the topography, uh, block out any views of this, but also give privacy to those that are going to this resource center. Which I think is great. And again, we can do additional fencing and things of that nature in that area. And again, we already own this. So to the east as well. Of this line, we do own that property. Uh, so if we want to expand or do any additional buildings, we could do that. And the majority of the site, even to the east, is high and dry, not in a flood zone. There's a small portion to the north northeast corner outside of this aerial that. Um, is in a flood zone, but the rest of it i- is in a good spot. So. That's, that's really it. It it's something that I know we were already talking about the buses being in play and something that we wanted staff to come back. Already, which I, it's great that we agreed to. I think everyone understands and sees the need, especially in our community. And I think we see the value of Matthews Hope coming into our community on a consistent basis. I think they said it was four times. A, uh, a week that they're coming into our community and they're, they're pretty quiet about it. They're, they're, they're. They're respectful. And I think that's the people we need to be partnering with. And again, we don't have to fund them during the day-to-day. They'll come in and do this. They have it already. We just need to give them somewhat of a vanilla shell of a, of a building. So. This is, uh, that's the end of my presentation, but is there any questions, any thoughts of that overall?
I do. Thanks. Thanks for presentation. Great presentation. I I just want to ask, just very curious. So when I asked the council, the pleasure of the council. Did, were there any locations that was identified? And at that time, no one stated that it was a location identified. But you have a presentation with a location identified. Is there a reason why at that time, when I asked, did anyone have a location identified?
Well, and I may misheard you. I didn't hear that you asked the council that.
And you, you also asked the mayor as well.
Yeah, I asked the mayor if he had one, and he, he said no. So what's great is here it is. So. Again, the, the point of this is to either create a resource center and come together to create a resource center or, uh, not. It really comes down to that. Do we want a resource center? Hear no copy that is incredibly located, or do we not?
I wasn't finished speaking.
I answered your question.
I actually didn't answer my question. So you didn't understand my question, what you're saying. When I asked the council.
I'm not sure I heard you.
I, you, you actually responded. And you also asked the mayor. So I just think it's strange that you had Matthew Hope here. That was presenting an entire presentation that you actually saw prior to the meeting, and you didn't. Speak of your presentation and all to think to collaborate when you actually had Matthew Hope here.
Well, because I'm not saying it has to be Matthews Hope. I would like it to be them, but if there's other opportunities to partner with people, I'm open to do that.
Is there a reason why you didn't bring up your presentation and that you had a, identify a location that we could have spoke about? I'm just curious to understand your reasoning for not.
I, there, there wasn't the correct timing to do it. That was Matthews Hope for, specifically for buses. So. Again, buses don't need to be parked out here. I'm not saying it has, if you guys don't want buses out here, no problem. We don't have to do that either.
Not my question. I, I, my question is, is there a reason why at the time when it was asked, and when you also asked the mayor. About a location, you didn't disclose this location so we can discuss the location at that time?
We get to discuss it now.
You didn't want.
That's not my.
So you're not going to answer the question?
Because I wanted to discuss it now. That's the answer.
Okay, so you just didn't. Okay, so you just failed to disclose. I just think it's just, I, I don't know. I just think it would have been more helpful if we actually had a company that you. Was in your presentation to bring it up at that time, but I think it's a great, great idea and a great presentation.
Thank you. It is a great, uh, idea. And I think it's going to be very beneficial to the, to the residents, to our unhoused, to our business owners that are. Um, feeling, feeling the strain. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I, I won't have time to, to digest what you just presented. And my other concern is, is that. We have Miss Street that's been coming here over and over again, that wants to do the same thing. Uh, she has a five oh one C three. And then we have the other group that, uh, Pastor David, uh, is a part of.
Next, next step.
Next step. Next step, next door, whatever it was, that's been coming also over and over again and asking about. Doing the same thing in reference to a, a resource center. And so, uh, I'm, I'm just. Curious as to why those two parties were not.
I think they should join with it. The resources, again, that, that Matthews Hope has already created and the foundation they've created, I think is the perfect per, uh, perfect group to align with. I think they've shown their track record here, and what it does, it also creates opportunity for the local, uh, nonprofits to partner with them here locally as well. I think that's the benefit to it. So I think that's where the value really comes from, is that. Not only Matthews Hoping can kind of create the foundation, then we can supply or local organizations can supply, similar to Mrs. Street, can supply. Um, the day-to-day or any additional help that their heart, uh, is, is feeling. So it, by no means is this exclusionary. This is about inclusion and it's about solving an issue. So Matthews Hope is, is one piece of the pie. It's providing an opportunity for them to come in, bring their massive resources. I, I don't know if you've gone out to their. Brevard location, but it is, it is absolutely incredible what they've done and continue to do and the funding they get as well. So. That's where the, uh, plus comes from partnering with them, is that they have already established a very good. Clean track record and ability to get funding. I mean, what they said was fifteen million, I guess, that they spend a year in their budget. So. I think that's, that's a huge value add, uh, for them. So, uh, so no, it's, it's not, by no means is it exclusionary. And I, I would never want it to say, no, no local organizations can contribute. I think if only, if everyone is on the same page. They would want the local community to come together. That's the whole point there.
All right. So can you provide us a copy of this presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, if I could, Commissioner, provide some additional information on this, this parcel, uh, because we're going to need some staff direction here. This parcel was selected for demolition and currently has plans underway for a new cemetery maintenance storage building facility. Which would take place at the Forest Street, um, complex that's right next to the lift station in Fran Carlton Center. So we are in the process of, uh, having a civil, uh, civil design worked out to best locate. That facility in this property. So we'd need some direction on whether we need to change plans on that building. Or. Fit both into the site.
I think easily you could fit both. It's two, it's five acres. So if you wanted to split it in half, easily could do that. Um, there's, there's opportunity there. Obviously, it's our, our prop- property, so you can. Chop it up, whatever makes sense there.
Well, I would probably want to definitely table this and also from the residents in the area that live in, in that area, also they can have some type of public input.
No, absolutely. No, there's no, no decision I want made tonight, similar to what I was discussing before, that I think it's important that we have. Take the time to digest, get comfortable with it, kind of understand. There's, what's great, there's not any direct homeowners that, um, abut the property. So, so that's. Again, the, the area really benefits from that itself. Uh. So, um, if we can have that with, along with next week, just kind of seeing if we're going to be budgeting for buses or trying to come up with a location and agreement. Figure out if we can maybe coexist on one site with that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the building was scheduled to be demoed because of the condition it's in. So obviously, if we do renovate, there'd be a lot of renovation costs we need to look at for that. Uh, the outbuildings are also concerning for those who are scheduled to be demoed as well. So. I think what I need is clarity on how to proceed with the civil, uh, engineering for the cemetery maintenance storage building. And if I could get some information and direction on where we want to go with that. If we want to readjust, keep this building intact for right now and try and find somewhere else on the site for the cemetery building. Um, there would also need to be, in my recommendation, the egg, the entrance into that property isn't now currently one-way. It would need to be upgraded to a two-way entrance and improved. There's some, uh. The pathway, if you've been out there, the pathway to that building is in pretty bad shape, so we'd need to renovate that as well.
Oh, I, I, I would need time to look at the building. I don't.
Absolutely. No.
Why don't we start with this, is, well, Bradley, why don't you have, uh, A J. Go out and just take a. Get a deep dive in the building, whether it's salvageable or not, uh, and then give us a.
He's been out there to look at it. I can have, I can have a report put together for that.
Yeah, let's do that, bring that back to the council meeting.
And then do we have a budget already for that new building?
Yes.
How big is that new building supposed to be?
Um, I don't remember offhand. I can share the.
Okay, yeah, if you can, just because again, to kind of see, there's plenty of space here. That's, I think that's the upside, is that there's ample space there. Um, so. So I think it's, I, again, I think it checks a lot of boxes. It, it meets a lot of needs here, and if we can knock out two different things at once, I think that's well worth it. Do you have something to say?
Yep.
Or question?
Um, I, I do want you to know that, um, I have been working with, um, Matthews Hope. Uh, volunteering there, understudying the process about how they do everything and win a garden. So I am aware of what they're doing and I commend, but it's a big operation. It is a huge operation. And, and it would not interfere. They would, you know, we've already discussed. If they were to come in and do something like that, they wouldn't mind partnering with whatever's going on in the community. So that is not an issue. That's not an issue whether it's, it's their resource, uh, they're running the resource center or I'm doing anything. That's not a, that's not an issue for me. For me is being able to partner and serve the people that are in need. So. That's, that would be.
We're, we're under the, under the council reports. We're not.
Come speak and sit and sit, her name was brought up, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, I have been working with, I have been, I have been separate conversations with the council and the mayor. About the resource center on a frequent basis, you know, uh, personally. So. You all know where, you all know my heart and where my heart is about, about the unhoused and the needy. So. However it gets solved, it doesn't matter if it's, it doesn't matter. Whoever's doing it, I'm supporting.
I think a work, I think a workshop, I think, um, Commissioner Nesta, I think you did a great job at, at a starting point. I think some type of workshop.
It's a, it's a jumping off.
Jumping stock, which is great. So I think with a workshop with different community partners that is doing the work, like Matthews Hope, it's kind of getting together to brainstorm to actually see. You know, what type of, you know, site or location to be did. So I think putting together a workshop, I think will be the first step. And then in the meantime, Ratley can kind of do his research and figure out the condition of that building, presenting it, the workshop to us, and then we kind of go from there.
And it's in rough condition, let me tell you. I, I, I've been around it, but that's, again, it's to, to get it where we need to, so.
I think a workshop would be great.
I don't mind a workshop as long as we have goals.
Absolutely. Because if not, we have a bunch of what-ifs, and I think, yeah, the workshop is great.
Okay, all right. There's several locations. I saw that old printing building over here. That's, uh, right here on Forest Street. You know, that's a location. You know, the building might be in rough shape, but what is it going to take to fix that up? There are a lot of properties around that are, that are, that can be used. But we have to put our minds to it and pick a place and, and move forward.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Nest, anything else?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to say is, you know, we was asking why Commissioner Nesta brought this up. Instead of bringing up when the Matthew was here. Well, I was just asking in the back, when I went out and spoke with him once they left. And I say, you guys been in and out of Apopka for six years? Commissioner, uh, Smith's been knowing about it for over six years. Mayor's been knowing about it for all this time. And why is this just the first time they've been brought to the city council when we've been looking for avenues to really help out the homeless? They should have been here, and they already got a model, model project for us to, to go. This land seems like it's a, uh, ideal place for it to be. So if we're gonna say that we want to help the homeless, now is the time. They program for us, I'm concerned, that's the best I have ever seen, the best presentation I have ever seen for them. And we only have to provide a building and a piece of land. How simple can it get? And this is over there where the dog park is at. So how many, how many dollars we want to go over there and ask if this is going to be okay for the homeless to be over there? So it's an excellent thing, instead of trying to derail it, let's just make it work instead of trying to find a way not to have it work. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, here.
Thank you, Mayor. It's the first time you've allowed me to speak.
Okay, so I have one question. This site is so ideal. Why hasn't it never been identified before? You know, we spoke about NIMBY, not in my backyard. This doesn't affect anybody. But you know what's beautiful about this site? It's five acres. And five acres presents the opportunity for us to partner with other people and perhaps put tiny homes on it. There were some other municipalities have had free tiny homes. There's been grants for tiny homes. I'm not sure what the density of tiny homes are on, on this, but you know what? It really is a phenomenal opportunity, and I congratulate Commissioner Nesta for. For finding that property in a place where it's not going to adversely affect other members of the community.
Thank you. All right, I just, and that's it for my presentation. So with staff, I guess we'll work on something here moving forward, uh, for the next meeting.
Yeah, and any, any of the commissioners who'd like to visit the property, you can reach out to me. I'll take you out there. I will note that it, it is five acres. There is a pretty good slope in. Probably half of that property down to the wood line there on the picture. Um, but it is a large property.
Yes.
And I'd be happy to take anybody out there, like to go see it.
All right.
Back up, June eighteenth, and that's perfect. Um. On the agenda. The invocation and pledge are after public comment. Is there any reason why that can't be put back in front of public comment so that. Everybody's here for prayer and everybody's here for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I, I think it's where I want it to be, so.
Why, and why is that?
Because I want staff, if they don't get here the first twenty minutes, they want to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and listen to the prayer by Commissioner Smith, and they'll, they'll be.
But shouldn't they be here for public comment as well, just in case?
We, we've got the staff, it's all, it's all settled out. We're good.
Well, most municipalities don't do it that way at all, and I, I think it's a little bit. Um, abnormal, to say the least. Um. Want to thank Radley. Thank you for knocking out those presentations and actually applying those to the agenda for us to, to review. Um, any kind of outside presentation that we asked last time. So I appreciate you doing that and look forward to doing it moving forward. Uh, for, um, my final item there is just reminder of office hours every Thursday, eleven to one here at City Hall. Um, anything you want to speak about, we do it in thirty-minute increments, and feel free to make an appointment or anything of that nature. It's recommended, but you don't have to do appointments either. Um, and again, always re- remind everyone, if you're not comfortable coming to City Hall. For any and all reasons, I'm happy to, uh, meet you anywhere that you would like in any capacity. Thank you.
All right. Um, on the mayor's report, just had a great Memorial Day event last, uh, last Monday, the V F W one oh one four seven. Put on a really nice event, probably had two hundred, over two hundred people there. So appreciate everybody coming out and be a part of that. Uh, I think all of us, uh, were, attended the high school graduations. Uh, we got, we had four oh three and Apopka over eight hundred graduates, so it was a great opportunity to see our, our youngest. Crossing the, the path from high school on to, to whatever the next, uh, step in their journey is. Uh, we still have a few summer camp registration openings, so if anybody wants, needs a kid, get in a camp. Uh, I know we got sending it back, be happy to take your registration. So, um, I think some of them are full, but we still have some opportunities there. I, I know you've seen some of the, the, uh, the, the big crane, not cranes, the big bucket trucks around City Hall. We've been painting, uh, Fire Station One, along with City Hall, uh, getting it all clean, pressure washed, uh, sealed and painted, so. Um, we should be done here fairly, fairly soon. Um, and then last but not least, my mother's birthday today, ninety-six years young. So if you see Flo Nelson. Tell her, tell her a happy birthday. So with that.